Okay. The August 4th, 2025 Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board welcomes everyone present. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and to become future-ready within the greater community. This is a business meeting of the Board of Education, and we are pleased that you've taken the time to join us. For the roll call, all Board members are present? Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our color guard tonight is from the Northeast Magnet High School JROTC program. Please stand for the presentation of the colors, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Colors. Right. To check. Carry. Colors. Ready. Cut. Forward. March. Colors. Turn. Colors. Oh. Present. Colors. Ma'am. Permission to post the colors?
Permission granted.
Aye, aye, ma'am. Carry. Colors. Ready. Cut. Post the colors. Present. Arms. Ladies and gentlemen, please show me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Arms. Ready. Cut. Post.
Thank you to our color guard this evening. Latona, first item?
Good news, Future Ready starts here. Read to Succeed.
Invite Amanda Scherzul to come on up and her special guests. Thank you for coming tonight.
This is like month two of good news that I get to bring you. It's very exciting. All right. I am here this evening with Mary Kay Vaughn. She is a Read to Succeed reading coach at Peterson Elementary, and I will let her chat here in a minute with you about the impact this program has on her and the school she serves and the students. But I do want to give you just a little bit of information about Read to Succeed and what that is in case you do not know. That program focuses on helping children to read at grade level, by third grade, which is our goal one in our strategic plan. Volunteer reading coaches are matched with students at selected buildings, and they come weekly to read to those students for 20 minutes. They provide reading support and encouragement to help them to improve their reading skills, and this simple act helps them stay on track in school and life. It was actually founded by Women United, which was a small subsidiary, if you will, of the United Way. It began in 2015-16 at Gardner Elementary with 22 volunteers. Currently, we serve 22 schools, but we will be expanding to three more schools this year. And we're averaging about 200 volunteers at those schools, 200 to 225. At its height, though, which is something we all would like to get back to, we had as many as 427 reading coaches in our schools here in WPS. So I'm excited to introduce Mary Kay Vaughn to talk about the impact she's seen through this program.
Thank you so much for the invitation and giving me a chance to talk about something that is so much fun. I probably should, should, what can I say? Well, it's just fun. Okay. How's that? I've been volunteering at Peterson for four years, and that time I've served two boys and three girls, because one year I did two days, two students. I also volunteered at Dodge Elementary back in 2019, and I've been a Biggs and Schools volunteer. So me and schools and kids were like that. I'd like to share three stories with you about some of the students that I've worked with over the past four years. First story is about a little boy. This little boy liked Dogman books. I had no idea what Dogman was, but I learned quickly. And what they are, they're illustrated stories, and there's a whole series of them. And so you might think an illustrated story, cartoon, you know, pretty simple. But there were some hard words in there for him, and so when we'd run across one of those hard words, he would, you know, stumble across it. I'd help him with it. We'd pronounce it, and then he'd understand what it meant. And then I'd write that on an index card, and I put that card in an envelope. So the next week I'd come, and I'd pull out a card from the envelope and say, you know, do you know what this word is? And he'd say it. And the next week I'd try. So pretty soon, he told me, I want to see all of the words. So when I'd come, I'd have to show him all of the words out of the envelope, and he was so proud of himself at being able to pronounce them and understand them. So it was just very encouraging to me that he wanted to learn, and that that little tip helped him do that. The next fun experience taught me that reading is not just about reading. I had a little girl who wanted to make a robot. I don't remember exactly where that came from, but I said, okay, if we finish this book, we'll make a robot. And so while she, while we were working on the book, I was doing some research online, how do you make a robot? I found a way to do that using an empty toilet paper roll. And so when the time came for her to make the robot, I first of all wrote up some information about robots, and then I wrote out the directions. And so while we were reading, she was also learning about the robot, and then she learned how to make a robot. She was so happy with that, and it was really kind of cute. I wish I had a picture of it. The third story I want to share, it was with a little girl. And we were reading a book that featured a little black girl as the key person in the story. And the little girl was experiencing some prejudice in her school. And before the book got to this conclusion, my little reading buddy said, your color doesn't really matter. Anyone can be beautiful. I said, right on, girl. You know, we kept reading, and sure enough, you know, the book got to that conclusion as well. But along the way, there was another part in the book and the story where some of the girls were trying to figure out who was whose best friend. And as we were reading about that, my little student looked up, and she said, I never knew reading a book could be so realistic and exciting. And I said, you are absolutely right. And that's how I'll close. Reading is realistic and exciting for the students that I've worked with, for me as an adult, and for all of us, and I'm really happy to be a part of Read to Succeed. Thank you.
I love that. Reading's not just about reading. I'm going to show you guys, I know you guys are back to the screen, but you might have this slide where we're at right now currently. And I also want to share that Logan and Amy from United Way, who help run this program, are here this evening with us as well, and they've been a tremendous supporters, I've learned, coming to Read to Succeed and learned myself about the program and how we're helping our students to become proficient readers. The buildings that are not on here are buildings we just added, so we are going to also continue to serve these 22, but add Price-Harris, Kinsler, and Isley into this next year. So I just want to thank you for letting us bring a positive story of success to you this evening, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, and so are they.
Had to make sure I was on the mic. Mary Kay, could you come back up for a moment? Yes. That was wonderful to listen to, particularly the last story that you shared. I just wanted to say that the students that you are reading with, they don't know the jewel. They do. They know the jewel that they have, but maybe the public probably doesn't know the jewel that they, we have reading in this program. And when you talked about how you wrote out the stories, wrote out the directions for making the robot, I'd love to see it, because I know how you write, and I can't, I can just imagine that it was probably pretty perfect, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Julie? Good to meet you. Thank you for your stories and your service to our kids. Could we also meet the other two community partners?
That would be great.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. My name's Logan Bradshaw, and I'm a Director of Community Impact at United Way of the Plains.
Good evening. My name is Amy Holly. I am the Volunteer Engagement Manager at United Way of the Plains.
Thank you. Thanks for your contribution as well.
Absolutely. Thank you guys very much for what you guys do day in and day out, and thank you for dedicating your time to serving the students, and thank you for creating creative ideas to enhance engagement, to enhance learning. Just something simple as cards with a word in an envelope is a very creative idea, but that little guy is never going to forget that, and you've probably changed the trajectory of his life with something just very simple and basic, but then also giving him the attention that he really deserves. So thank you guys for everything that you do. Kelly?
If I could pick on Logan real quick. So part of the reason why we did this this time of year is because you need volunteers, don't you?
Yes, we do.
So tell us how we could get a vol. All the people here care about kids in our district, and I know they're going to come sign up because they care about kids in our district. So tell us how to do it.
Sure. So if you go to unitedwayplains.org/readtosucceed, and scroll down about to the middle of the page, there's going to be an interest form that you can fill out. And so when we open up priority registration, we will send it out to everyone who filled out that interest form, and we plan to open that up next week. So if you're interested, please feel free to fill out that interest form so that you can get notification when priority registration opens up.
Thank you, Logan.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, ladies, very much. We appreciate everything you do. Okay. Latona, next item?
United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Katie.
Hi. Good evening. President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, distinguished Board members, and Superintendent Bielefeld. Our educators are excited to kick off the new school year tomorrow, and they're truly looking forward to welcoming students back next week. We're starting this year with a lot to celebrate. We appreciate the continued dedicated time during in-service for that annual policy sign-off. I know last year Superintendent Bielefeld made a commitment, and we agree that that respects staff time and ensures important district policies get the attention they deserve. We're also grateful for the additional staff, addition of certified staff to the Financial Oversight Committee and the partnership with the Community School Advisory Committee. UTW Vice President Mike Harris visited the new coordinators this morning and said it was energizing, inspiring, it was an energizing, inspiring start. We are also going to expand our Reading Opens the World $10,000 book grant from AFT to include a community school this year. We've partnered with several different ways this year to support the goal of third-grade proficiency in literacy, but one way was that we helped this summer was helping our teachers with the state requirements for the seal of literacy on their license. This summer, we sponsored a Praxis prep course for the seal of literacy that's needed for all elementary teachers by 2028. Last I heard, 15 out of the 15 participants that took the class and took the Praxis passed the assessment. That helps support our elementary educators with the new recertification requirements by the state. As we begin this year, we do have a few key concerns. We still have some questions about the DOJ Code of Conduct and how it's going to be implemented in buildings this next week. We've received some questions, and we really haven't had any communication from your team on what that looks like, so we would appreciate some of that. So when people call us with questions, we're on the same page, and we know how to answer those. We also were wondering about next steps for the continuum schools, especially where we feel like the pilot programs struggled with staffing levels. So we haven't heard back if that was, has been adjusted, but we would appreciate to hear some more information on that. Last year, there was extreme heat in some buildings, for example, Truesdale. Classrooms reached 90 degrees, and that made the start of the school year incredibly difficult. While I know you addressed those issues as fast as you could, they really point to larger facility challenges. We still have many middle school gyms that lack air conditioning, while the nearby suburb districts have these features. I just wanted to bring that up again. I know I bring it up always in the summer, but thinking about our students and our staff that are working in these gyms, it's very, very warm. We hope that you're working on some way to address these costly maintenance concerns that are really needed in our schools to support our students and staff. Sorry with this computer here. Okay. I did want to say thank you to Julie Hedrick for raising the issue of high school enrollment numbers. This was something we've heard about often over the last few years, especially at Southeast and Heights, and we do feel that overcrowding is a safety issue and that that needs to be addressed, so thank you for bringing up that concern. I wanted to remind everyone to do their civic duty tomorrow and vote in the primary, and there's no staff meetings before or after school because it's election day. We're entering this year with optimism and a shared purpose. I know that when we work together, we can do great things for our students and families, so thank you.
Latona, next item?
Service Employees International Union.
Welcome, Esau.
Good evening, everyone. President Albert, Board members, Superintendent Bielefeld. I have a couple of things. Recently, we were able to do a food drive with the SEIU membership across from the Union Hall at West Douglas Park, and we raised a pretty good amount of food that'll be donated to Mario's Pantry. And for those of you who don't know, Mario's Pantry was the pantry that for a long time was run through the United Way by a gentleman named Mario Cervantes, and he's recently retired, but the unions are doing what they can to keep that pantry going. I would also like to thank you guys for what you have done with the WPS Foundation. I think that's a really good solution, where the other organization that was a part of that had been failing miserably for the past couple of years, and we really appreciate you stepping up and contributing to the Friendship Fund in the way that you are. Because at this time of year, unfortunately, I get lots of calls from paraprofessionals and secretaries and people who had those two or three months off during the summer, and because of reasonable assurance, they're unable to collect unemployment throughout the summer the way a Walmart employee would be able to or any other private employer. So, you know, a lot of times we send them to Mario's Pantry, and a lot of times we tell them to reach out to the Friendship Fund, but the Friendship Fund really only has three opportunities in a person's lifetime or career with the district. And so after about three years of getting assistance in the fall, because when they start back, they haven't had a job for a few months, or the job that they have had pays so very little that they're behind on their water bill, they're behind on their power bill, they barely have gas and grocery money for the first month, they're coming to school and working. And so I've given each one of you a packet, and I'm pleased to announce that on July 24th, Senator Edward Markey from Massachusetts has introduced a bill in the U.S. Congress to raise the minimum wage for support workers and paraprofessionals to $30 an hour. This would allow them to make $45,000 a year, and it would put them in a much better bracket so that they could support themselves, and they wouldn't be in these dire straits when the summer ends. And so I'd like to encourage everybody on the Board and anybody who'd like to take a public stand and say that they'll support this, I'd love to see it. If you don't feel comfortable doing that, though, perhaps you could reach out to Congressman Estes and tell him that in between his Facebook posts bragging about how many people have been deported, he might step up and see what he can do about getting paraprofessionals and people a higher living wage for taking care of our kids so well. So thank you very much, and I appreciate you guys giving me a chance to talk this evening.
Latona, next item?
Public Communications.
Okay. For people who have signed up for public comment, we thank you for joining us tonight. And if you have signed up for public comment, you will have three minutes to speak, and we kindly ask that you acknowledge your allotted time. Typically, we have a timer displayed, but our superintendent will be keeping the time. We encourage you to share your thoughts openly and honestly, but we ask that your remarks remain focused on school-related matters and are respectful and constructive. The Board will listen to your input but will not respond during this meeting. However, we are listening, and we may follow up as appropriate. So with that, Latona, who's our first speaker?
Kendrell Holly.
Welcome.
Refreshers. Some of you may remember who I am. Some of you probably don't. My name is Kendrell Holly. I was attending board meetings to champion getting albuterol in our schools. I'll give you a quick refresher. I am a certified asthma educator through the National Board of Respiratory Care. Been doing that for almost four years now. I am a registered respiratory therapist through the National Board of Respiratory Care, and I've been doing that for 16 years. I am a lifelong asthmatic, and as of June, I've been doing that for 50 years.
Wow.
Got a little bit of passion for what I do. As I stated, if you remember, I was championing with the Board to support a bill to get albuterol as an emergency medication in our schools like they do with Narcan and the EpiPen. And please, if you will join me, I'd like to give you guys a round of applause, because as of July of 2024, the state of Kansas has allowed us to stock emergency albuterol in our schools for our children. I think that's a big deal, because statistics show one in 10 students in our public schools has asthma. So that's, I mean, just a quick glance around here, six to seven people in this room would suffer from asthma, so that's a really big deal for me. My next step, warning, because I will be back.
You're welcome anytime.
My next step is administration of the albuterol. How are we going to do that? There are two ways you administer albuterol. One of them is through an aerosolized nebulizer, and the other one is what I keep on me at all times, which is a metered dose inhaler. This is by far the quicker way to administer, and there is something that is very necessary with this, which is a spacer. So when I come again, I'm going to bring you paperwork regarding those, because we get the medication, have we going to give it to them. So that is my next fight for our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Latona, next speaker?
Charlene Marvin.
Welcome, Charlene.
Well, it's on the Native American Program, and I can't, really, I come here today with a really heavy heart. Last time I was here, as I looked at facial expressions, I felt like my words were falling on deaf ears, and what I shared was really of no interest. But I'm here again with hope. The Indian Education Program was going great with the leadership we had, so much better than in the past. The students were having fun and learning so much, and your actions have really hurt them. As the saying goes, if it's not broke, don't try to fix it. That goes for this situation. Previously, it was stated that you dismissed the staff due to the budget cuts, but keeping the program. Again, after talking with the state level, they assure me that the budget was not the issue. This is one more thing that makes it sound even more political. It's like someone did not care for the dismissed person or persons and one of their own people in the position. So we get mixed signals here. And not too long ago, I was approached by someone that I didn't really know, and evidently they knew me, and told me that they had got to look at a budget, the finances, and et cetera, and they knew, but I didn't want to hear it by hearsay. People in the community, though, have shared that, and I will quote, "They can no longer trust you," unquote. And that's sad. So in ending, the community has the right to know what is actually going on, not just a few, and we would like the truth, please.
Thank you, Charlene. Latona, next speaker?
Walt Chapel.
Welcome, Walt.
Thank you so much. I'm going to wait for you folks to get the handout. I'm sure you can reset.
Go ahead and start, Walt.
As the previous speaker was saying, you must be able to work to build the trust back in the community. And you folks are doing a tremendous job. Most of you are all volunteers, obviously. I've sat in your position many times, and I find it very difficult many times to figure out, okay, where are staff recommendations coming from? Can we follow the money and find out where we are with our budget? Can we see how it actually helps students learn? And what I've done today is to work with the county clerk's office to find out how much will this district receive in additional funding as a result of the bond, not the bond, but the increase in appraised value for property. Now, you folks have a mill levy currently of 51 mills, and what I'm concerned about is that because of the increase in property values, and what I've shown here is from the county clerk's office, there's an increase of almost 9% in value for 259. This is not county-wide. I had it breaking down specifically for the school district. So when you follow the money, you find out that we're having a major increase, not by raising the mill levy, but because we have now property in this city and this district will benefit with a major increase of $16 million. That money is going to come in whether you raise the mill levy or not. Now, maybe that's how you were going to plan to fund the bond. I don't know how you came up with 450 million and you're going to keep the mill levy the same. But my concern right now is that we should say to the taxpayers, first of all, we're going to reduce spending. Secondly, we're going to keep the mill levy down at least to, by two mills, to 49 as opposed to 51. And what I'm also suggesting is that you make sure that we prioritize having the kids learn employable skills, that you put your focus in the budget on how it is we come up with these ways to make sure our kids can leave our high schools prepared to go out and earn an income. Now, if you do that, you'll help a lot of property taxpayers. Many of you, four of you, are running for reelection, and it's important for you to be able to go to your voters and say, we're very conscious of the fact that we've charged so much right now, over a billion dollars, and we'd like to make sure that you folks are able to have our kids come out proficient. Thank you, Diane. You're a good timekeeper. I'm not sure you're listening well, but that's all.
Latona, next speaker?
Rebecca Armstrong.
Welcome, Rebecca.
Our school district can be transformed by establishing a bottom-up approach, organizing each unit within a district as a unit within itself, part of a larger group, so still accountable to the mission and values of the whole, but working within their environment in which they are operating. This will help in which they are operating. This will help bring about sustainable solutions for our challenging times. Taking these in-service days to listen to employees instead of telling them will help transform our process and provide the change we need to address the perilous times we're in. This is the beginning of my eighth year. Tomorrow, I start back at Northeast Magnet as a pair educator. It will be in-service for a week. There will be little to do until the students arrive. So much of our time is just doing time, not adding any value. We no longer have a room to prepare as pairs. All the rooms are taken with five new teachers, and we have no space assigned that is functionally our space. So there is nothing to prepare. We will introduce ourselves to the new teachers, ask others if there's anything we can do to help and catch up. It is a top-down structure. There is no space for dialogue, problem solving, or sharing ideas. Pairs, by contract, must report five, six times a year on a Friday before the holiday for 3.5 hours. There is no students, so we just sit around, help others clean, kill the time. If the principals had the authority, as a unit should, the principal could decide how we use that 3.5 hours instead of HR. We could be present during parent-teacher conferences nights or other school events to help. That is value-added time, far preferable than putting in our time, a prison term, on that day before the holiday per contract. As a person with a formal education in management and business as well as leadership training in Manhattan and in Wichita, Kansas, I know we can do this better. There are a lot of opportunities to save money and address the many challenges facing our schools, but first, the process needs to be created that honors, collects, engages, and listens to the voices on the front line. I know what that looks like, and my experience at USD 259 definitely is not that. Our management process is an old and inefficient one that is known to be costly on all levels. There are other paths forward that find solutions to our very challenging time. It starts with listening to your people, not telling them what you want them to hear.
Thank you, Rebecca. Latona, next speaker?
Trish Heilmann.
Welcome, Trish.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Beilefeld. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to begin with gratitude, gratitude that our mill levy is not being raised this year, and that our schools continue to receive funding increases through rising valuations. That said, I also come with hope and a request. You didn't get off that easy. That you more clearly demonstrate to the public how you're working to find cost savings, pursue efficiencies, and steward taxpayer dollars wisely. Wichita is a community full of resourceful and budget-savvy people. We stretch dollars every day, so I urge you to fully leverage tools you already have, your financial oversight committee, site councils, and listening sessions, not just for appearance but for real impact. When community members and staff bring ideas forward, follow through. If the idea is being used, say so. If it's not feasible this year, explain why. Every time you follow up, you build trust, and trust builds support, and that includes support from your own employees. I believe we could have had more buy-in last year, even within district staff, had these engagement effort felt more authentic. I also want to raise a concern about the way the proposed 2026 bond issue is being discussed. Please do not frame the bond as a fix for operating budget challenges. A bond is a mortgage, a big one. It's a tool for investing in long-term assets, a future-ready center, early childhood programs, air conditionings in every gym. Those are worthy goals. Be clear about what you're asking for and how many mills it will acquire. But please do not tie the bond to the facility's master plan in a way that makes people feel like they're being asked to vote against their own neighborhoods and/or schools, as the plan has objectionable parts such as school closures and teardowns. That's not the way to build community support. It shuts down meaningful discussion and leads people to believe you're not open to questions, which I know many of you are. We all want our schools to thrive. Wichita Public Schools offers the best educational opportunities in the region. I believe that. When students attend, engage, and have support from adults at home, I believe your leadership plays a crucial role in helping that, make that success possible for every student. So please, lead with continued transparency, the humility that you as volunteers have always shown, and a deeper commitment to listening. It's the smartest and most powerful investment you can make. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Latona, next speaker?
Melinda Ware.
Welcome, Melinda.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I have no prepared remarks. I really have more questions. This is in, I am a Native American, full-blood. I'm a product of USD 259. I've gone to school here all my life, went to Wichita State University, and I'm concerned about the Title VI program for the Native American students here in Wichita. There was no programs available like that when I went to school. I had great grandnieces and nephews that have gone through the program. They loved every moment of it. It was very beneficial to them. And I guess, like I said, I have more questions as to who administers the Title VI program. I understand it is federally funded grant. Also, how the selection of a director or staff is done. It has never really been explained to me, you know, the operating function of it, how it went about. And I guess I'm looking for transparency. And also, who does the hiring for the director and the staff? What are the salaries? What is their operating budget? What are they allocated? I've worked at Wichita State University for vice presidents and deans. I know a lot about federal grants. You have to be very, very careful about how you spend that money, and they only appropriate it for certain amounts. So it's very hard to try to get away with spending money that is not yours. And so I had more questions in regard to the relief of the last director we had, and he was let go and his staff. And I don't think that's ever really been explained to the Native American community, and I'm not, I'm really looking for truth. I'm really looking for honesty. That's how I was raised. And I expect everybody to be that way. I know it doesn't happen that way, but that's how I was raised. So I thank you for your time for hearing me tonight. Maybe I'll be able to come back with more prepared remarks next time, but I just have more questions, I think, in regard to the program. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Melinda. Latona, next item?
Education Individual Plan of Study Report.
Okay. Kelly, you want to introduce staff?
Well, welcome up, Tim Hamlin and Laura Barker. We're gonna talk about individualized plans of study, part of goal number two of the strategic plan, part of our state board outcomes as a state of Kansas. And now that they've walked up here, I'll quit talking and they can take it away.
While Laura's doing that, good evening, members of Board of Education. Tim Hamlin, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. I'm joined here this evening with Mrs. Laura Barker. She's our Individual Plan of Study and Work-Based Learning Specialist for Wichita Public Schools. This evening, we're going to present an overview of the Individual Plan of Study, which is more commonly referred to as the IPS, and how that operates within the Wichita Public Schools. It's my goal this evening that through our information, we're able to help you better understand some of the information that we share with different community groups, groups when we talk about the IPS, some of the tools that we use. We'd like for you to kind of get an idea of the scope and sequence or the activities that our students from sixth grade through 12th grade experience during a school year. We also would like to show you one example of a possible electronic portfolio, and then hopefully you will be among the first to learn of a new feature that's gonna help parents access their students' information on our, on the school website, so, or on the district website. So, that being said, we're gonna start with, let me click it here. Okay. We're gonna start with, one of the tools that we use is a short video. It's about three or four minutes. This was produced by the Kansas Department of Education, and I feel it's important that you have the opportunity to view this video because, as I said, we do use this when we go and talk to different community groups, say Rotary, the Hispanic Advisory Council, students and parents. It also was posted on our district website. So I just, again, I think it's important that you have the opportunity to view that. I apologize that you may have to get a crick in your neck here trying to see it, but it's important that you see it in case you are at any point asked questions about it. So we're just gonna play this. Like I say, it's relatively short, and it is from KSDE.
Hello. A module on individual plan of study. With the invention of a global positioning system, GPS for short, the paper map has become a thing of the past. Instead of wrestling with a large fold-out map as we're speeding down the highway, today, we simply plug in an address, and the GPS leads us to our desired destination. And if we prefer not to take the suggested route, the GPS provides us with options. In many ways, an individual plan of study, also known as an IPS, is like a GPS. It's a tool students can use to plot a course that'll lead them to their destination. However, an IPS allows for something a GPS often doesn't. Students are able to define their own idea of success and build a plan to get there instead of having their destination selected for them. Today's job market requires employees to have a higher level of education than ever before. In fact, by 2020, the Georgetown Center for Education and the workforce predicts that more than 70% of the jobs in Kansas will require a post-secondary credential in addition to a high school diploma. 70%! So what does that mean for the student who doesn't graduate or who doesn't honor post-secondary credential of some sort? The likelihood of those students ever making it into at least the middle class becomes slim at best. So why an individual plan of study? To lead the road in the success of each student, each student must be able to identify what success looks like for him or her. The IPS is the tool and process designed to do just that. It helps students, beginning in middle school, and their families, build a plan that will help that student identify and explore talents and interests. A lack of planning has derailed many people and projects over the years. Our students are no different. Excessive planning is critical to the success of any worthy endeavor. In some cases, a student who graduates high school and doesn't immediately enter college may be better off than a student who goes straight into college with no plan and drops out before graduating. That student now has no degree and is saddled with debt. Think about how different that outcome would be with the right plan in place. To recap, an IPS is: a product developed and maintained by the student, beginning in the middle grades; a process adopted by the school to assist the student in developing a meaningful IPS; a means for a school to personalize learning for each student. Let's talk for a moment about the components of an effective IPS. First, a good IPS will help students identify talents and interests related to broader career fields through the use of multiple interest inventories. Over time, patterns will begin to emerge, which creates an opportunity for dialogue and exploration. Students and parents should meet with school professionals at least two times a year to review the student's IPS and make adjustments. Next, a list of all high school courses mapped according to career interest areas. This helps the student identify and select courses needed for particular career areas. In a sense, providing them with the opportunity to try before you buy. Chances are, if you don't like science, veterinary science may not be the most rewarding career option for you, no matter how much you love animals. An effective IPS should include a post-secondary plan. Now, I know what you're thinking, a post-secondary plan for a middle schooler? They change their minds as often as they change their moods. It's never too early to start exploring all the options for post-secondary education. Not all careers require a four-year degree. Some may require a two-year degree, while others may require the completion of a certification. Understanding requirements helps students and parents make better informed decisions. Finally, an effective IPS will include an electronic portfolio that includes the student's projects, assessments, resume, job shadow summaries, et cetera. Students are then ready to share their best work with prospective colleges and employers. So we've talked about what an IPS is. Now it's time to talk about what it isn't. An IPS is not meant to track students into certain educational paths aligned with certain careers. It's also not meant to culminate with an 18-year-old making a career decision. It's simply a tool and process for the student to chart his or her unique path by exploring or trying on careers in a more authentic manner. Just as important as identifying areas of interest, the IPS process also helps students identify career areas that do not interest them, helping to narrow down the field when they're ready to make post-secondary plans. Want to learn more about individual plans of study or trainings taking place in your area? Visit the KSDE website at www.ksd.org. Thank you for your time and attention to this module on individual plans of study.
All right. Oh, no. Here we go. Panic. Laura, I'm gonna let you do that while I ask a question. Pop quiz. Is the IPS a process or a product? Exactly. We view it as both. What you have in front of you, I did, there was a handout distributed to you, and on that handout, that kind of shows the process that our students in Wichita Public Schools follow from sixth grade through 12th grade. Presented on the screen in front of you now, or behind you actually, are the four basic steps of the IPS process. What you see on your handout, starting in the middle, are the grade-by-grade highlights. So for example, in sixth grade, there's a breakdown of the areas of focus that students in sixth grade will pursue or be exposed to during that school year. We have all from sixth through 12th grade there for you. This document is in much, much greater detail. It's actually about 10 pages in length, but I was told that that was not ideal to hand as a handout. So if there are questions about that, and you would like more detail, we certainly have Mrs. Barker here available, and her contact information is on the bottom of that document. So in sixth grade, they start out basically just kind of getting an idea, who are they? In the 12th grade, it becomes, as you would anticipate, each year, it should become more sophisticated and more detailed and more narrowed down. So in the 12th grade, the students do produce what we refer to as an electronic portfolio. And with that being said, I'm gonna have Mrs. Barker kind of join me here and explain, show you one example of an electronic portfolio. So.
Okay, again, on the screen behind you is a, is a senior at South High, and her example of her senior portfolio. Actually, she did this the first semester of her senior year, and so you can kind of see some of the choices that she's making. When we look at the personality styles and the learning styles on the first two slides here, so this is something that you'll see she started in, in sixth grade, and they're learning these. So they take some quizzes. They do all kinds of different activities to hone in. In sixth grade, they're learning what different personality styles are, and then throughout high school, they're identifying which ones are me, and then eventually we're tying it to certain careers and interests and things you might be able to do and be good at with those personality styles. Same with the learning styles here. She learned that she's a visual and an auditory learner. Her interests are, she's kind of honed in on her interests and, and what that she likes. And there's, there's 250 interests that kids can select, plus there's blanks that they can add in their own interest. And then we get more into, again, the 10-year plan. So in addition to that, just exploring who you are, what careers you're interested in, we also talk about what you want your lifestyle to be. A lot of times, you know, we tell kids, what do you want to do career-wise? Well, there's 7,000 careers out there, and they might only be exposed to 10 of them. And by the way, there's another 100 that are gonna be here next year that we don't even know about. So a lot of times, looking at this and what your plan is and where you want to be in life really helps the students, too. So she's talking about what kind of family she wants to have, house, travel, money. That is all part of this component. She taught elementary school teaching, asked her first career option, and then she gets into what kind of, what it takes to get there, what are the expectations of that, of that job. And then we do try to get everyone to come up with at least one backup plan. If that doesn't work out, what's next? And so her number-two choice was TV reporter, and the same information goes on her portfolio for those, the expectations of the job, and then now what? So then we, now we get into, how do you get there? And so you can see that this young lady has, she's gonna apply for the university scholarships, FAFSA, ACT, select the school, graduate, figure out where she's gonna live. She has her top college choices here. She actually has marked what schools that she's already been accepted to, what scholarship she's applying for, and then there's links in here to her personal statement, to her resume, to her scholarship essay. So that is what the product looks like. And I think oftentimes, when we talk about IPS, we get into what is the product? One second here, let me get back to our slide. Okay. So that is an example of a portfolio. I think we're sometimes... I think where sometimes we fall short in connecting the dots, and I'll get into kind of ways to improve that, is like with the Work-Based Learning Continuum. Because we have all, we have this scope and sequence that you're going through this, 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 and then you create this senior portfolio. But, starting in elementary school, we do career awareness activities. We do career exploration and then as they go on, we're doing career preparation. But we've got to make sure that every time we do a field trip, that we tie it into their individual plan of study. A lot of times, we do things that we've done forever and we don't tie them into the career or to the future of the student. So be more intentional about all of our work-based learning experiences and how they tie into your individual plans of study. And we can do that. One example that I think of is we do, eighth graders take a trip to Wichita State University for a women's basketball game. Well, we did that for several years and then we were like, well, what if we have them, drop them off on the other side of Wichita State? And before they go, we get into Zello and we do a whole, a whole lesson on what is Wichita State? What kind of degrees can you get there? What to expect on there? And then have them walk across the college, then go to the basketball game, and then they go back. But now they have that college experience and that IPS. So maybe when they're a junior and senior trying to look at colleges and deciding, they're remembering their trip to Wichita State. So really trying to be more intentional about a lot of the great things that we already do in our district, but tying it directly to the individual plans of study. And so kind of some of our improvement plans for this school year is IPS conversations at every level of work-based learning. We also have created some consistent lesson plans. Zello is a really great platform that we use, but there's a lot of lessons. And so at some of our buildings, it became kind of a checklist. You know, you have to do this, 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 and this. And that wasn't really giving the students the, all of the information. It wasn't promoting the conversations that need to happen with caring adults. So we've kind of, we came up with consistent lesson plans that will be district-wide, so they will look the same. We also have a lot of students that are going from one school to the other, so they're getting the same message across the board. Also, our five-year plan, so our eighth graders come up with their five-year plans and kind of their draft of what courses they're taking. We'll continue that strategic goal plan. Our IPS data, we do a lot with that. An example of kind of like target marketing. So the workforce center had Camp Hype this summer. And it's an opportunity for 16 to 20-year-olds to go to different camps. They have everything from IT, healthcare, manufacturing, finance. And so we would use the student's IPS and just kind of do, everyone's invited, but we used to just kind of post them around and try to spread the word to parents. Well, now we're specifically going in and saying, Kelly, I see based on your individual plan of study that you're interested in healthcare. This camp might be a really good fit for you. So we really try to use the data and that helps our teachers and our students like, oh whoa, they're looking at this, they're looking into this, this really does matter. And then we are doing some parent link, which is our, kind of our parent communication system specifically with that. So when our eighth graders are doing their career interest, we're now sending a parent link to eighth-grade parents and said, did you know that your eighth grader did an interest inventory that they learned about careers that match their interest? Ask your student what careers they're interested in. And kind of just trying to promote future-ready conversations outside of the classrooms and with their parents.
So with that, communication is always a challenge. There's either too much, too little. It's not necessarily in the right form for people to be able to access it. So one thing that, and I am in no way an expert here. So when I was looking, scanning the room and Rob Dixon is not here, so my anxiety level just went totally up. But anyway, it's my understanding, this is something that we're trying to do to provide for parents so that that trying to access their student's information is easier. It's a one-stop shop basically here. So it's gonna be referred to as Family Hub. And individuals, whatever their preferred way of accessing information on the internet, be it Google, Facebook, so on so forth, they're able to go through any of those, LinkedIn. But then what they are able to access would be something like this. So they're gonna be able to, rather than having a password for all of those different icons that you see there, they'll have just a single sign-on. And beyond that, that is where I'm venturing into areas I am not expert enough to really say. I do believe, having children myself and having a multitude of passwords, it's, this will be very nice, so. Yes, well, there you go. So I will take all credit until it's over. But I did, my closing remark on the IPS, the one thing from the video that I think is incredibly important, it's as equally valuable to determine what a student is not interested in as it is what they want to. I used to teach chemistry and anatomy physiology and I every year would take my students to a cadaver lab. And by George, we'd have people going in, they wanted to be doctors and they came out, they were gonna be pastry chefs. They had no, no interest in that. So, but that's incredibly valuable to learn that prior to the tremendous expense one invests in time. So with that said, we're happy to, to answer questions if we may.
I got a great job. This was super informative. We heard earlier about a desire for us to align our budget and align our resources in order to help kids become ready, right? So either one of you, could you talk about what else? You guys pass the agenda item and consent for Zello for the program. We do that every year. What else do we do to invest in this to help ensure this is systemic and all kids have these opportunities that you're describing?
Okay, one thing, Laura kind of alluded to it, but she talked about those consistent lesson plans. We have, I did go through the Perkins Grant this year to try to find a way to, that's gonna require someone to do a whole lot of work to come up with those consistent lesson plans across the district. So through the Perkins Fund, I am able to basically provide a supplemental to that individual. I really liked what she said about, because I was thinking initially that, well, just at this school, maybe this gets done, maybe at this school. But you have a kid that may go to both. They bounce back and forth. And so providing that equal playing field, I think is going to be important. You want to add anything additional to that as far as additional activities?
Well, I think just kind of the focus on the work-based learning. So we used to kind of have IPS and then work-based learning over here and we are kind of really working to make sure that everybody understands that the Work-Based Learning Continuum and all those steps are part of the IPS system. And so to make sure that we have those consistent conversations. I think the parent piece, so when I talked about those parent links, that used to be something that we were like, hey, you guys can do this at your buildings. And we had a couple of buildings that were excited about it, not so much other buildings. So if we do it from a district standpoint, then maybe, then it's going to make sure that every single parent, everybody out there is getting the same questions and the same message. So I think those are the two biggest things that we're doing right now to cross consistency across the district.
Laura also indicated or kind of alluded to that we'll take the data from Zello. And let's take an eighth grader, for example, transitioning, rising to the ninth grade. They may have entered or produced some data that said this one particular pathway might be of interest to them. But they have no idea that that pathway is even there or that exists or what it entails. So we will intentionally go and find that kiddo and, and share with them those opportunities, so.
Thank you. And we support Camp Hype with some fun, some people. And we support, every building has an IPS coordinator that's a supplemental. So there's, you know, there's resources that have been invested over the past few years into this beyond just that. Are you, are you ready to talk about the big career fair or not? Not yet?
Well, if you're bringing it up, I will.
I'm excited about it, so I would love for you to.
I guess permission, so. Oh, yeah. So part of my job, well, part of my role, I'm, I'm part of the Futures Fair Board, which is a big community college event that we do in Sedgwick County. And we bring about 110 different universities and we invite, last year there was 69 different school districts that came. And so we've done, the career fairs here as our own individual USD 259 thing. But there's a lot of schools that do that and we're kind of trying to steal human resources people. So we have partnered this year with Mays School District and the Wichita Workforce Center and we are putting on on April 22nd. I guess this is the big announcement, but we're having a community-wide career fair at Century 2 in a partnership with USD 259, Mays School District, and the Wichita Workforce Alliance.
So again, trying to prepare our kids, give them opportunities if that's what they choose right out of the gate.
And I can say, it is gonna be two parts as well. So we kind of had these career fairs and our seniors go to it, but it was kind of like, oh, you don't, you're not gonna go to college, come to the career fair. So we plan to invite sophomores and seniors because going straight into the workforce can be a plan. It's not only the backup plan, but a lot of times they don't know about all the local employers. So sophomores will come to do the, more of the exploration piece and then seniors will come to hopefully connect and find employment.
See, I didn't know that, that's awesome.
And we will transport, that transportation is a barrier for many of our kiddos. And so we will provide transportation to Century 2 and from each of the base high schools. So we're excited about the new opportunity and the new spin that Laura's gonna put on this, so.
Just another way we're aligning resources to make kids future-ready. And the last thing I would say, which is not a question, but what I, what I really love about it was one of the early slides, the idea that we're talking with kids about their strengths and passions. We're not just saying, what job do you want, but what are you good at? What do you like? What do you want to do with your, with your future, with your family, with your house, with all that stuff? And I believe, as a parent and most parents I talk to, these are, these are the most important conversations we have with our kids, more so than what was your score on that test last year, right? What do you want to do? What are you good at? What kind of experience do you want to have after high school? Whether it's college, tech school, whatever. So I'm very excited about the parent engagement. And I think, I do believe our parents will get, will get very engaged in that, so. Great job.
Very good. Julie?
Okay, so I really enjoyed this sheet here where it kind of says grade level by grade level, what the, what the students are doing at that level. And I, I trust she's not watching the board meeting and isn't gonna be embarrassed. But I have a family member that is in, that just finished eighth grade and is moving into ninth grade. And since I'm a board member, I know that we do this plan of study process with all of our students in the district. So I kind of regularly ask her, you know, well, what are you, what are you talking about in your plan of study conference with your teacher? I, I also run into her teacher that she does this with regularly at Panera. And so I'll have that same conversation with him. And she continues to tell me she has no clue what career she wants to do. She has no clue what her skills are. So what happens with those kids that kind of fall into that thing of, they're trying to go through this process of doing this, but are still just totally struggling with any kind of sense of direction or sense of passion or, you know, the things we're striving for them to discover.
Well, if I, if I had the fantasy or the absolute answer, I would not be here. I'd be on a beach somewhere. However, that is a reality. We have many, many, many students, despite all of the resources, the opportunities we put in front of them, that they still are uncertain. I would say, and we weren't really supposed to, we weren't gonna show a whole lot of data tonight, but it is interesting, if you look in Zello, you'll see the eighth grade, the careers that they're selecting. And they're the professional athlete, the actress and all that. It is interesting to see as the students mature, you see mature responses and more realistic careers starting to show up on that data. Here, there's my full disclosure. I am taking a kiddo August 17th to a school, which will remain nameless. And I am not certain that he is 100% sure of what it is that he wants to pursue. But my hope is that he will continue to take some of the lessons that were learned in his individual plan of study and apply them and think, oh, that's what they were talking about. So care to add to that? Please you.
Well, I would also add that all of this falls under our career in technical education or in partnership with them. And so although she might not know, she's taking some classes that will gear and guide her towards that. So if she's taking some, you know, culinary classes and no, I don't like this, again, we were saying it's just as important. So she switches maybe some business classes. And the objective of those classes is very, I mean, it is a broad, we might think culinary, you're gonna be a chef, but really it's every component of the restaurant management of that industry. And so she's seen all those. And so I hope that within her elective classes or her CTE classes that she's taking over the next few years, that will help her hone in and make a decision. And I mean, I also always say, there, there's so many options. We have kids do, we tell them exactly what they're gonna do for 13 years and then on the 14th year, we're like, pick something. And they're like, oh my, there's, I mean, there's so many choices. So I think the narrowing process is what we're trying to do. Everyone might not leave with exactly what they want to do, but if we can continue to narrow it down for them and make it easier for them, they're gonna be on the right path.
You were looking for a tangible answer. I would say this. I stopped asking young people, what do they want to do, a long time ago? And I simply asked, what do you like to do? And the lucky people find a way to do that and make a living with it. There's a make a living and make a life and we hope that you can do both, so. But, good luck with that.
I think, I think it's a great program in spite of the fact that my granddaughter is struggling.
Thank you, Julie. Hazel?
Yes, so we have a lot of students between sixth and 12th grade. And I was wondering, when they, who follows up and monitors or mentors them from each grade going to the next grade? Are they monitored and followed up and updated on a regular yearly basis? And can you explain how that works?
So there are, I mean, yes, we do, we do follow as far as the, when we do our data. I mean, it will show lesson completion, it also shows, it shows engagement, it shows how many times they're getting on. So when they're going at different buildings, we do different things. Because sometimes it's the exact same person who's going with you from one grade to the other. Other times, it is, it, it's the switch and the transition to a new teacher, which is part of the reason why we thought that those consistent lesson plans that look the same everywhere would be a good, would be a good place to go. And then making sure that the information that goes into Zello and that the parents are looking at and all the teachers are looking at is there. Because I think sometimes we don't know, maybe that person is not their advocacy teacher that they relate to. But when we have it, when, the way we have Zello set up is that any of their teachers in any of their classes. So their person might be their social studies teacher. And so if we can get to where we're building this culture of everybody's asking them about their IPS. The, the portfolio that I showed was actually in the English class. So that was a component that was done in the English class. So the idea of this is that it's a school-wide initiative, not just a specific advocacy class that this teacher is who you're sitting with, but that it could be, that it's a conversation that you're having with your CTE teacher, with your English teacher and with your advocacy teacher.
Okay.
I think one other unintended result of the post-secondary assets being a graduation requirement. I think that there will start to be conversations, be it through advocacy or other classes, where, hey, where are you on your post-secondary assets? And part of the individual plan of study, you can understand how there are credentials that you could earn if you take certain classes. So I think just more awareness, I think that it's a big ship, this process to get it going. But I do think the more that English teacher uses the terminology, IPS, the math teacher, the basketball coach, all these people in these young people's lives, the more common that language becomes and used, I think the more powerful this is gonna become.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. Melody?
You know, I, I really do appreciate the explanation and everything that I'm seeing and hearing. It's, it sounds wonderful. I'm only concerned about those that kind of either drop off or get lost. And, you know, I love it when you say, instead of asking, what do you want to be? What do you, what do you like? I mean, I love that, but the question would be, who's asking that question? And I recognize that what you're wanting to do is really universalize this kind of sorta within our district where it's so common. I mean, everyone is asking, how about your IPS? Where are you at in this process? How can I help you with it? But we know that that doesn't happen. So for those students that either A, get lost, or, or B, they don't know, or C, they're not engaged, what about them?
Again, I don't have the 100% answer, but ideas in my head are individuals that I think, I think a building principal can be a huge, huge influence. think, I think a building principal can be a huge, huge influence on students in their building. I also, Lee Casper, I know Lee's not here, and I don't know if you're, Lee is starting her second year as the head of counselors in our district. Wonderful person. I'm really excited and think that she has rapport with counselors at all grade levels, that she's going to have some ideas. It won't be Laura or I. The reality is, we don't have that relationship with every student out there. It is going to take individuals where the student attends every day. There's got to be some adult in that building that they trust, that they have a bond with, that's going to take an interest in that kid. So we obviously don't have 100% on that. We need to get better and look forward to ways to try to do so.
And so when you're tracking this though, because I think that's what I heard, that you actually are able to pull up who has done what and at what point they're at.
Right.
Do you, who follows up?
So we, what part of, which strategic goal is the check-ins?
Goal two.
Goal two. I was going to, so it is actually something that we've built in. So we did, we're like, and I'm like, let's have future-ready conversations and, but how do you make sure that that's happening? So we actually, last year was the first time within Synergy, we actually had check-ins where teachers have to go in with a list of questions in regards to IPS and post-secondary assets, and they're checking that they had, that they had these conversations with the kids. And so we have tried to not only monitor it on the student's side, but have some accountability on the teacher's side, saying, yes, I have talked to Melody, I've talked to Stan, I've talked to Julie, and I have had these conversations with them.
One last question. So Zello, that's what we talked about before, really, I thought was Zello. So now, is this kind of, not substituting, but is this over, is this like the umbrella for everything? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. IPS, Zello is just one tool within the IPS process, so, yeah. And Zello, there are different platforms that different districts use, but I think Zello is probably the most robust in four or five years probably, in Wichita, I'm, it's only year three, so I don't know for sure, but.
I would say, I don't know when we're going to share it with you guys, but we have some data from the senior survey, so I don't want to, again, I want to out all the surprises, but we collect, sorry, Lauren.
Hey, it's another month.
Is this, is this tonight?
No, next month.
Well, I don't have the actual numbers, but we're around 80 to 95%, depending on the high school, of seniors left high school with a plan. So we're not at 100%, but to your point of like, what about the ones that slipped through the cracks? There are some still, right? There are kids that just flat say, I don't know. But I think that number is, I could say with confidence, that number's way higher than when I graduated in high school. Most of us didn't know, right? Well, didn't have a plan, other than go to college. And college isn't a plan, right? Laura says this all the time, like, college isn't a career plan, right?
Other than to just get out of school, where you're not coming.
That's true.
But all of it. That's what I needed to hear. That's exactly what I needed.
Lauren will have a lot more in September.
Excellent. There she is.
There, I did a teaser. I just did a teaser.
When I go in and talk to eighth graders and ninth graders about this stuff, I mean, they're not always like, oh, great, we want to talk about this. But our seniors and our juniors are saying, we need more of this. Why didn't you give us more of this? And we like, we did, you weren't listening, you didn't listen until, until your junior and senior year, so.
I also think on the strategic plan, and I know we're way over, so we'll get it. But last year, we reported to you that the five-year plan, and Laura had it as one of the bullets, we had 100% of the eighth graders do complete the five-year plan. So that's the first year we've attempted to do that. We were successful in doing it. It's going to be exciting to see how that maybe bolsters Kelly's numbers when those students become juniors and seniors.
I need to hear the numbers. Thank you.
Very good.
Very good. Oh, wait, I did have a few more questions for you guys. How are we alerting parents to this? Like, if I'm a parent of a student in the district, how do I know about this?
And I almost got away from the podium before you asked that. See, I anticipated that question, and I really debated how to respond. We've built a process, a system, a tool, but I am going to go back, this may not be the popular or the right answer, but every single building, the population, the climate, the culture is so unique that it would not, we can come up with a single sign on, but I honestly think this has to go back to the building. That principal or that staff, they know their parents, they know the methods of communication that are going to be effective. So I would say, we have 88 buildings, there's 88 ways that they're trying to reach out potentially to parents. So that's not necessarily the best answer that you wanted, but it's the honest one in my opinion.
We have a, we have a very complex system here, and so one size fits all. Ideas are not often solutions.
Right.
So, thank you very much. Great presentation, great amount of information, and we look forward to next month's meeting for a little prequel of information then. So thank you guys very much, and we appreciate this.
Good luck to the granddaughter. Hope my kid figures his.
Okay, Latona, next item?
Second Step Report.
All right, we're going to welcome Amanda Scherchel and Justin Castle. Amanda helps us with elementary curriculum and Justin with secondary curriculum. And they're going to give us an update on Second Step, which is part of Strategic Plan Goal Number Three.
Good evening again. I am here to talk with you guys about Second Step, but I did want to formally introduce Justin Castle. So when Holly Ingram took the Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services job, Justin stepped into the Secondary Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, and he's doing great. Give him two big thumbs ups because this is his first board meeting tonight, and he's got it. We are here to talk to you about Second Step, but as I was listening to Tim and Laura, I was writing some things down, and I went ahead and grabbed their handout too, because I think you'll see some threads between what we're going to talk about and what they just talked about. I'm so sorry. Thank you, babe. I have one more. Make sure people are the best. So I wrote down words like goal-setting, decision-making, real-world readiness, and I thought about what skills it takes to be able to do that within the IPS umbrella. And I thought about honestly executive functioning skills. And the need to put a plan together for their future is really important, but that takes a different set of skills. And where do we start learning those skills? We start them in elementary school and pre-K as soon as we get kids in. And we do that through programs like Second Step. So Second Step is a program that we consider our core curriculum for character, education, development in K through eight. Pre-K through eight is available, and pre-K also supplements with what we call Little Red Door. So this program began in 2017 at the elementary level, and it onboarded at the middle school level in 2019. So we've had it for a number of years. And it actually does for me fall under both goal one, two, all goals, one, two, and three. Two, with what we just talked about with Kelly, or Tim and Laura. One, because it actually supports academic success, and three, because of the safety and belonging theme. So I know that employers today are looking to hire technical skills, right? They want people who can do data analytics, AI and machine learning, they have technological aptitude, but they are most certainly also still looking for people who can communicate effectively, who can think critically, solve problems, work with others, and manage their emotions. And what we believe in here is supporting the whole child in Wichita Public Schools, which includes ensuring that our students are equipped early with those necessary competencies to ensure success. I was also scribbling down soft skills, but then I crossed that out. Second Step teaches necessary competencies for the workforce. So I am going to share with you a little bit about elementary, and then I'll let Justin share what it looks like in middle school. So Second Step increases skills, as you see on the screen, in academic perseverance, pro-social behaviors, positive relationships, and school climate. But I also think it contributes to growth mindset, goal-setting, managing our emotions, having kindness and empathy for others, and problem-solving. When we support students in these, we also see positive academic outcomes. What this looks like in the classroom for elementary K through five is a daily time on their instructional block schedule of 20 minutes. They will have 20 weekly 15 to 30-minute lessons across the span of the year. There's brain builder activities, engaging handouts, extensions, videos, and even puppets in pre-K, which is very exciting for the little ones. We also think about the who teaches this, and that might be a question you have. So in elementary, this is taught by the homeroom teacher. So if I'm in Ms. Albert's class, and she is my teacher all day for fourth grade, she's the one who's delivering these lessons to me. And I'll let Justin talk about middle school.
Thank you. Second Step for middle school is also a research-based program designed to improve students' skills such as growth mindset, goal-making, emotion management, responsible decision-making, managing relationships, and social conflict. The studies show that these skills can help improve academic performance, promote positive relationships, and reduce emotional stress and negative social behaviors like peer In middle school, the program is taught through the advocacy class by the advocacy teacher. And programs like Second Step support the creation of positive classroom and school climates, which is critical to meeting Strategic Plan Goal Number Three of safety and belonging. And because we teach Second Step in grades K through eight, students develop a common set of skills and strategies that can be practiced and used and reinforced throughout their, their career in grades K through eight and in the community and even at home. And since it's consistent curriculum across every school, it doesn't matter which school they attend, they'll get, they'll get the same information. Both elementary and middle school have what they call unit topics. You can see here that there are four units in each topic, and we'll look at one from kindergarten, fifth grade, and seventh grade. In kindergarten, during the growth mindset unit, students will, will go through lessons and learn about, called watch, listen, and learn, why we pay attention, mistakes are okay, and practice makes better. In fifth grade, during the emotion management unit, students will learn what are strong emotions, what is stress, planning for change, what can I change, and making a change. And for seventh grade, during the managing relationships and social conflict unit, students learn what makes conflict escalate, keeping your cool in conflict, conflicts and perspectives, resolving conflict, and taking responsibility for your actions. Teachers have digital access to complete these lessons and posters with common Second Step language to use in their classrooms.
You have, we just unpacked, we have that handout for you too that was within your handouts. You also have a general elementary handout and a middle school handout, as we were discussing, that has more information that we didn't put on our slides tonight, but you can definitely refer back to. So Second Step aligns really well to other initiatives that we've done here in Wichita Public Schools, as well as resources that you can get either nationwide or at the state level. I'll start with restorative practices. So it has the common goal with restorative practices of safety and well-being, but also connectedness and relationships to the adults at the school and to other students. And then we have CASL competencies, and this is the nation's leading organization, advancing the development of character and personal development skills for all students. That's what their website says. And they have five skills around that wheel that we really want to support students in: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And actually, you'll see those threads of those five competencies all the way through the Second Step scope and sequence K through eight. We also look at the social-emotional character development standards that the state of Kansas puts out, and we created our proficiency scales long ago using SECD standards as well as CASL resources. And that's what our teachers use to plan and assess for these skills. And then Second Step is that core curriculum they use to teach those skills K through
Some additional supports that we receive or have put in place to help our teachers teach this curriculum include online access. Teachers, coaches, and building administrators can assign lessons for these classes, and then we can see which lessons have been completed, so we can track that. Additional workshops are available for teachers and leaders to look, to review, refresh, or learn more about the components of the program. Family communications have been developed, and we can send those home to explain what's being taught in this curriculum. And those are available in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and Arabic, and several other languages. Our Second Step District Support Team is made up of Chrissy Matei and Kelsey Steele, and they have developed a Second Step scope and sequence with links and startup guides and additional activities that they can give to teachers that are aligned with our other initiatives such as the read-alouds and belonging lessons as well.
And last but not least, for our part, we are excited because we just found out that in August, Committee for Children, which is the publisher of Second Step, is going to be providing with, us with tiered lessons as part of our contract with them. So much like we've talked to you about RTI or MTSS in academics, with some, few, and all, some kids need, all kids need the core, some kids need just a little bit of extra support, and a few kids need intensive support, they're actually going to be providing lessons now for the few and the some, which is exciting because it's just been a core resource in the past. So we're excited to just see what that looks like. Again, that doesn't get released till this month, so we don't know what they look like, but we're excited to share those with other people in schools that support social-emotional development such as counselors, social workers, it could be used for small groups or even individual one-on-one counseling. As always, we like to bring you a practitioner of the content we're bringing. So tonight, I'd love to introduce a teacher from Washington Elementary. She's been standing back here, and I forgot to introduce her earlier, so she'll forgive me. And I worked with Hannah as a first-year teacher at Clark Elementary. She started in April, I want to say, she was a late hire, and just blew me away. And she is still doing wonderful things in Wichita Public Schools at Washington. I'm glad to have her here tonight to talk about the impact.
Wow, what an introduction. Thank you so much, Scherchel. Good evening, everyone. Like Amanda Scherchel said, I'm Hannah Evans-Mendoza. I work at Washington Elementary as a fourth-grade teacher. This is my 11th year in the district, so excited to continue, excited to continue the work. In my classroom, I teach Second Step. Second Step is a curriculum that provides lessons on things like growth mindset, goal-setting, empathy and kindness, and problem-solving strategies. Sometimes, students do forget that teachers are humans too. And sometimes, as teachers, we forget to look at students as more than just a test score or a data point. Through Second Step, we can use this time to provide a safe space for children to speak about their struggles, their concerns, their experiences with their peers, and learn to communicate effectively. It's time, it's a time to receive age-appropriate lessons in self-control and emotional management. Have you ever said no to a fourth grader who has asked you to sharpen a pencil at least three times? If not, you will see the importance of emotional management. My students get a chance to practice building confidence and skills in working together. Second Step can look like team builders, mini lessons or games, circles or read-alouds, group activities, quick writes, or my students' most favorite, journal time. My students and I enjoy this time, and it's daily allotted for us to stop and reflect about how our class is interacting with one another and how our room is running. It gives us that time to build relationships, solve problems, and create that sense of belonging with one another. My students and I enjoy this, oh, sorry, as a teacher, this time gives me the time to look at my students' perspectives as little humans, and I model how to build trust and show them how to have empathy for one another. Speaking for my students, it teaches them appropriate coping strategies and ways to set goals, and outlines how to be positive contributing members to society, not only in our classroom, but in our community as well, which is one of the goals of public education. What I teach in Second Step, we practice throughout the day, lunch, recess, even field trips to exploration place. We want them to be college and career-ready, and if we're wanting this for them, then skills like Second Step teaches them, along with everything that we do academically, are equally important. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
And I think we'll illustrate with an anecdotal story from a middle school teacher who was unable to be here tonight, but shared some words too.
I asked Chrissy Matei if there was any teachers with a...
Wait, hold on a second. Hannah, hold on just a second.
Okay.
Can't do it. Five more minutes, maybe.
So I asked our middle school lead coach, Chrissy Matei, if there were any success stories out there, and she had several, but she wanted me to know about this one, middle school teacher at one of our schools. And it was about a 7th grader, and I reached out to the teacher and asked if I could share their story. And she told me that she got to know this student as a 6th grader through an extracurricular activity, and then had him in class the following year as a 7th grader. And some 7th graders have a hard time understanding that you need to be nice to other people. And he was very vocal about his lack of hearing or feelings for others if they didn't directly impact him. And she said he could be hard with other kids and with adults. And she said that there were two different Second Step lessons where he got to talk about how he could congratulate classmates if they got a better score on an assessment for him, or then him, and how he could encourage people that hadn't done well. And she didn't think that those opportunities would have came around in class without a curriculum like this. And she said it brought tears to her eyes, and she wished she could be here tonight to tell you the story herself.
All right. What questions can we or Hannah answer for you about Second Step?
Thank you, Amanda, Justin, and especially Hannah. I guess this is a question for Hannah. So for the Second Step curriculum, to what extent would you say there's flexibility or rigidity in terms of adhering to the curriculum? Is it like, you have to go by the books on it? Or can you speak more to that?
As an elementary teacher, I think we, as teachers, have to be flexible, because, like we say, every class is different in ability levels. So I think it does allow a lot of flexibility. Like I said, sometimes we'll turn the questions into a game. Let's pass the ball and take turns to answer questions. My students have really taken to, ooh, can we answer these questions in our journal? And then share with a friend. So it allows a lot of flexibility, and we love the reflection time that it gets at the end because it kind of allows us to make it our own.
I would add to that, Noc, that the scope and sequence is flexible too. So if I have a class who's particularly struggling with peer conflict, but the next thing in my scope and sequence is emotional management, I might jump ahead a few lessons to that peer conflict. I know they're both tied together, just because that's the need that's presented at the time. So we do allow flexibility in what's right in front of you that you need, and you can jump around to get, and even go back and reteach lessons you've already taught because they need more practice.
That's a really good question, actually. When we first started implementing this program, right away, teachers, and I was the principal at the time, teachers came to me and said, advocacy's only 25 minutes, it's not enough time to get through this. And there's questions that kids ask that are a little off-script. How can we put more time into this? And we talked about it with our building leadership team, and we came up with basically a second day of it. So we delivered the lessons as the curriculum intended on the first day, and the second day, we moved the desks around, got the kids in a circle, and then really had some deep discussions. And that's where the teachers found the most value in it, because something magic happens when you take the table and desks away and you sit in that circle, and you're staring at people. And this is your homeroom class, kids you see every day, and you're a trusted adult that you check in with first thing every morning, and have real conversations about character and empathy and how to treat other people, and all those things that they may or may not get outside of school. And the teachers who really did that made connections with their kids that you wouldn't believe, and we saw kids go, the stories from 6th to 8th grade with kids, and how much they improved as people. This had to have a huge impact on that.
And then for clarification, so Second Step is in all of our elementary and middle schools now at this point. Yeah, so Second Step, to my knowledge, probably is one of the most heavily researched social-emotional learning programs. There is a lot of empirical support for it. I think just like one of the studies I was looking at previously was like, hey, there's like an $11 return on investment for every dollar invested in Second Step, or again, other social-emotional learning programs. I guess my question is more so for USC 259, going back to our strategic plan, especially when you're talking about academic achievement. I'm curious, what kind of data do you guys use to measure, to the extent possible, because obviously there's so many other things that affect academic achievement? But how do you measure success? How do you operationally define success when it comes to the Second Step curriculum?
So I mentioned, I mean, the most obvious answer is we do grade. The employability skills in secondary, but the behavior skills in elementary through our proficiency scales, which are directly correlated to the social-emotional character development standards from the state of Kansas. So teachers are expected to add those grades into the gradebook at a certain cadence depending on the grade level, including our exploratory teachers, so they often provide grades as well. So that's one data point, if you will, of measuring success in these not soft skills but necessary competencies. I also think that you can see it in student behavior. I believe that we track things like office referrals and suspensions and all of those things that are outcomes of incidents that happen. And what we don't see is all the proactive things that our teachers are trying to do to prevent that. And when we have a student who may have a history of those types of response to behavior, out-of-school suspensions, detention, whatever, and they start to improve because they're learning the necessary skills to not get themselves into those positions and make those decisions, that that's another way that we measure it. It is much harder to measure these competencies than it is to measure whether a student can add and subtract, but we do have ways.
Thank you.
If I could step in, and data is great, right? As a district, that's what we have to go off of. But when you get into those classrooms and you're talking to those teachers, I had two off the top of my head. I had a habitual stealer, and so we had to sit down as a class, and we didn't know who it was. And I had a student say, my mom worked really hard to buy me the pens that somebody took from me. And we worked really hard, we went to the store really late, and I really, really loved those pens, and somebody took those from me. And the next day, they reappeared in the student's desk. Or the student that literally goes to PE every day and causes chaos to the point where my students are not enjoying what should be every kid's favorite time. And then when we have that conversation, we say, what you're doing is hurting us, and we don't like that. And that student says, I don't like being picked last. That instantly, that day, solved that problem, just with the time that we took during Second Step to have that conversation. Okay, if we know you're going to tear everything up because you don't like being picked last, how about we strategically make sure that you are not last, maybe not first, somewhere in between, just not last? It's the time that we get for those conversations that change the dynamic in that classroom that people may not be able to see every day, but it does work, because when else can we talk about it? When else can we take that time? Not core. It's that necessary time.
Thank you, Hannah. Thank you, Noc. Kathy?
Thank you, Hannah. Make them the team captain, and they'll be happy.
Yeah. Leadership skills.
Hannah, thank you. It's teachers like you that help students have memories, good memories. And those little kids, they're so precious and so vulnerable, and the Second Step, you're teaching them life skills. And I ask, I wonder if any of you have a story about Second Step overflowing into their family life away from school? When the student is ready, the teacher appears, and to me, students are my teacher. As an adult, we can learn so much from our students. So have you heard of any stories about that? Have you ever thought about offering it to their parents? I mean, have a parent-student class together with Second Step? And Justin, welcome.
Thank you.
Can I actually tell you that last night at the dinner table, we have family dinners every other Sunday with my dad, and I have a sister who has a sophomore at East and going to be a 6th grader in a few weeks at Wilver. She was at Peterson, they both went to Peterson. And Second Step actually became a topic of conversation because they asked me, Auntie Anne, what are you doing tomorrow night? They wanted to go to the pool at my house, but I said, I have a board meeting, what are you talking about? And I said, I'm going to talk about Second Step. And both of those girls could make connections, even, I mean, Finn's a sophomore at East, and so it's been a couple of years removed that she's even had this curriculum. And she could make connections back to the skills that she was learning and be able to talk about that at the dinner table. Do we have room to grow? Should parents start asking how a Second Step today? Absolutely. But I do think our kids hang on to those skills, and when the opportunities present themselves right now, they're probably mentioning it, but I think that's a good point to build the bridge a little bit with our community and our family about those skills transferring.
And it would be great if at our elementary levels with our PTAs and even our site councils, if they were aware of this also, because it can't help, empathy can be learned. And it's not coddling the student, it's teaching the student life skills, and that is what I appreciate. In the circle time, I'm a substitute for elementary, so I understand that circle time, even though I do everything that the teacher says, do this, do this, and I check it off, yes. But getting in that circle and having that time to talk, those kids see you as a person like they sometimes forget to. So thank you. That's a great presentation.
Thank you, Kathy. Melody?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things that I wanted to add. So Kathy, when you say, does it reach outside of the classroom setting? I can affirmatively say that I see it all the time, when you're around certain young people that you know are in the district, because their behavior is different than some others. They automatically step in and make these right decisions, and/or explain why it is that you shouldn't be doing that, what's the better way to do it. They really do work their way through it. So I think that it's more pervasive in our community. If you're around students, you can see it. So I'm just thankful that we're continuing to do it. One last thing. Hannah, this is the most quiet I have ever seen you. If anybody knows Hannah Mendoza, she, that's all I can say. You are...
Trying not to jump in in every question.
Yeah, no. She is magnificent in the classroom. You should watch. You should just go and watch.
Thank you, Melody. Julie?
I love your stories, Hannah. Thank you so much for sharing them. And those personal stories and the personal anecdotes are the way that we really can see how the program is working. However, we are data-driven in this district, and so I was a little confused. As we were going through the conversation, I realized that at the elementary level, of course, the student's classroom teacher is the one that this curriculum is a part of their day. And then I learned as we went on that at the middle school level, they get it in advocacy class, and their advocacy teacher is the one that uses this curriculum with the students. But then I was confused whenever you said that all of the teachers give them a grade. So explain that to me.
Sure. So in elementary, Hannah would give a grade on the personal character and social scales that we have, but then also exploratory teachers, PE, art, music, and library would also be responsible for giving additional grades on those scales at certain quarters of the year. And secondary, I'm going to defer to Justin.
So the grades for Second Step are only in the advocacy class by the advocacy teacher at middle school. And we put out a schedule that matches different employability skills with different lessons, and we line those up and make sure that we cycle through several of them. So they get a grade based on their participation in these lessons during advocacy by the advocacy teacher. So other teachers don't give them grades for Second Step throughout the day. That's a good question.
Yeah, that clarifies it. That's kind of what I was confused about, is how do other teachers give the grades?
Okay. Thank you, Julie.
Hannah, I just want to say thank you for joining us this evening at the board meeting to share your experience. I think it's valuable information and insight that you share with us. A few questions. We've gone over, I think, what's working and kind of how this program works, but I would like to ask, from your perspective, what are ways that we can improve this?
Well, since you asked.
I did.
When the slide came up about the different tiers, that really excited me because I think a lot of the time, especially seeing in my building, when we have those high-need kids that need that higher level of tier instruction, or even small group, or even one-on-one, we kind of defer to our counselors, and when you have a high number of those high-need kids, it's hard on them too. So hopefully, with this new system that we are going to put in place, it can kind of put it back in our hands, because again, when we have that time with those kids, especially the ones that are high needs, that helps build that relationship. And with that relationship, they want to please their teacher, they want to make their teacher happy, and they want to make themselves proud. And so I think that goes hand-in-hand with the academics. So I'm really excited to learn about that. So I think that would answer the question, is just getting more information in teachers' hands about the upcoming rollout.
Okay, very good. I just made a note to myself to follow up with you in the near future to see how that's working out for you in your classroom. My next question is, from your perspective, are there any resources that you need to make this more successful?
Knowing that time is not always an option, I think some resources would be allowing people like yourselves in the buildings and actually see what it is and what we're doing, and sharing with the community why it is so important. I know we can add politics on top of this and whatever else, but this is not political. When we see the behaviors in adults our age screaming at baseball fields, they didn't have Second Step. And so this is important because even it's small victories too. I had students who would, I didn't do it, it wasn't me, I didn't do anything wrong, to literally at the end of the year, she said, I know I did it, I know it was wrong, I'm not ready to apologize yet, maybe by the end of the day, probably like four or five before I go to stealth. That is what we call progress. And so hopefully, by 5th grade, she is able to come down a little quicker in her emotions and processing through. But how else in the environment that she goes home to every day would she be able to process those emotions? Otherwise, that student that I got at the beginning of the year could go her whole life behaving that way, and that's not okay. So where else can they build these skills at school? So that's just my two cents.
Very good. No, I appreciate it, and I appreciate you sharing honestly from your perspective. We will get the board scheduled to view Second Step in action in classrooms, and so that'll happen. We'll get that scheduled sometime in the first few months of school. So thank you for the recommendation and suggestion, and then we'll give some feedback on that as well. So great presentation this evening tonight. Hannah, thank you so much for joining us. Please feel free to reach out to any of us as you enter into the school year and see different things happening, and feel free to share the wins, the successes, and then continue to share ways that we can improve this, and if there's any resources that are needed to make this more successful. So thank you very much. We appreciate you guys.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Noc, I apologize. I was not doing a very good job looking at my screen, so...
No, I was just going to say, Hannah, we're going to come stop by your classroom.
Room 210, ask a few of them, I think they've been. You are welcome anytime. And our building is always welcoming to anybody who would love to come. We won't always throw you into a house gathering starting off, but we would love to have you all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Hannah. Latona, next item?
Budget report authorization to publish the notice of hearing and intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate for the 2526 budget.
All right, we have Addie here tonight to update us on the budget. Take it away.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, esteemed board members. Superintendent Beilafeld, my name is Addie Lowell. I am the chief financial officer for Wichita Public Schools. I'm going to get this slideshow started. Very good. Well, first of all, I just want to say what a privilege it is to work with so many brilliant educators who gave us two excellent presentations this evening. They're doing the hard work of, day in and day out, of doing the things with the kids and... They're doing the hard work of, day in and day out, of doing the things with the kids, and so it's an honor to be here to talk about the budget that's supporting all of the activities that they're working hard on. I can't say mine will be as interesting, but we'll try to keep it lively as always. So here's a quick update on where we're at, at our budget timeline. We're almost at the end for the 2526 budget year. This evening, we have a couple of milestones, so we need to fully wrap up building needs assessments, so that we can get into how we use the building needs assessments to bring the proposed budget for the 2526 fiscal year to you all today. So after today, we will hopefully establish a budget and revenue-neutral rate hearing, and then plan to adopt the budget on September 8th. And so we'll go ahead and jump into the first part of our presentation, which is building needs assessments. The last time I visited with each of you on building needs assessments was about, I think it was May 19th, the board meeting on May 19th. So it's been a little while since we've circled around on this topic. We do have requirements as part of the budget process to review building needs assessments, review state assessment data, reflect how we use the building needs assessments in the approval of the district's budget. We also have to answer three questions, and we're going to kind of finalize the responses to those questions this evening. Those three questions are, what barriers must be overcome to have all students achieve proficiency, which is levels three and four, so above a level two on state assessments? What budget actions, recommendations, or reallocation should be taken to address and remove barriers? And if all those budget actions are implemented, we have to estimate the amount of time it would take for all students to achieve proficiency, so a level three or four on state assessments. To answer question one, we kind of confirmed what barriers we believe exist in our schools. These barriers haven't changed materially since the establishment of this building needs assessment process. I will say, I think it's a very thorough list. We've designated barriers for different types of groups, students, staff, parent, and community, and we've all agreed that these barriers remain and are still things that we are trying to overcome in our schools in the 2526 school year as well. When we walked through the building needs assessment process with building principals, and they engaged site councils and building leadership teams in this process, they kind of had four overarching topics for what budget action should be taken in order to address the barriers that we've established in the previous slide. Some of those budget actions include teacher and staff recruitment and retention, a lot of mentioning of increasing pay benefits and training, as well as retaining highly-qualified teachers for ESOL, special education, and paraprofessional staff. Mental health and social emotional needs was an emerging topic as well. Requests were made for resources to help address mental health needs, which include additional counselors, social workers, psychologists, and other social emotional learning programs like Second Step that you heard about this evening. We heard a lot about parent involvement and support, active involvement from parents and guardians, which is not necessarily something we can buy with our budget. We can support family engagement initiatives, as well as resources for students and families. We also heard about attendance issues, so chronic absenteeism and tardiness being a source of things we needed to invest in to improve and remove barriers. I want to get into a little bit of how we align our budget with these student outcomes to meet the needs of these, these students. And we went over this a little bit in May as well, but I think this is a good recap of some of the comments we've heard this evening. So at the very bottom of the pyramid, and how we look to provide necessary services for all of our schools, we, we look at what core service we have to provide. Every elementary school has K through five teachers to support the enrollment at that building. They've got a principal, they've got clerical staff, they've got custodians, they maybe have security, they have nutrition service workers. We have to provide utilities and transportation. All of the policies and state statutes that we're held to, that's kind of where we put our core services. We must provide those things. And when our schools don't have them, we make sure they do. If enrollment pops up in one school and they need an additional kindergarten or second grade teacher, we give them one. If they have additional students that need to enroll in PE at the secondary level, they're gonna get another PE teacher. We evaluate those needs on an ongoing basis every single day. The budget office processed through 500 budget changes and requests last year. So, these reallocations to provide core services at a fair and equitable level across all schools is happening all the time. The next level is kind of that, the special education and ESOL services for students. So, students that may just need some additional contact hours, or some mandatory special education support on an IEP. And so those get evaluated by each of those programs, and resources are placed based on the needs of the students that are in those schools. The next level up is kind of where we get into this building needs assessment process. So we're getting lots of feedback from staff, from building leadership teams, from site councils, from building principals, on what are the specific needs in those buildings. We said this tonight, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. Two schools experiencing the same barrier may not have the same solution to that problem based on the strengths, the students, the demographics in their building. And so each building is left to tell us what they need in order to remove the barriers in their schools. Some of those things may include tutors, intervention programs, additional curriculum, summer school, or other extra learning opportunities, additional classroom supports, extra counselors, social workers, psychologists, or behavior positions are a lot of what we see in those requests. And, and above that, kind of above, but all the way down and through, is the work to, to accomplish our strategic plan goals. So they all kind of align, and they're all, they're all considered as we look at budget requests and requests that principals are making in order to remove barriers with their students and staff. So, there's, there's one question of what budget action should be taken, and principals have a plethora, endless things that they need in their buildings to help remove those barriers. We have a limited budget, and so we can't always meet every single request every year, but we do a darn good job with limited resources by finding efficiencies to be able to then reinvest those funds into things that are gonna make a difference in our schools. And so, the top 10 things, you see nine boxes on this slide, the 10th is a substantial wage package this year, so that was kind of the overarching, big budget ticket item. So the remaining nine are some additional core services, so we had some expansions in some schools. Isley is becoming a K six this year. Northeast Magnet is growing in their, the total number of students they're accepting in, in each grade level, and so they needed some additional classroom supports. Pleasant Valley Middle School, Curtis, Franklin, Irving, Wilbur, Mead Heights are all schools that receive some additional supports because of changes in enrollment. And those are things spanning from additional classroom teachers to security, to school administrators, et cetera. Newcomer was a big focus of this year's budget, making sure that newcomer class sizes were not bigger than our reg ed class sizes. A lot of concerns coming out of, of newcomer classes that are busting at the seams as students are transitioning into their homeroom classes, needing to ensure that they have supports that will follow them. And so fixing that newcomer class size issue was a priority in terms of removing barriers in our schools, and there's a whole list of schools that got impacted by that initiative this year. ESOL, you've, you've heard about an ESOL expansion, so we are now, every single one of our schools offers ESOL services in some way, shape, or form. And so the secondary level now is, is receiving students and providing ESOL services. In addition to that, we also right-sized some services at elementary schools. So we've got some various elementary schools impacted, but many secondary schools receiving some additional ESOL supports to ensure that every student, no matter what school they're attending, is gonna get some ESOL services. Counselors, social workers, or psychologists, you may hear us use the acronym CST when we refer to these particular types of employees. This is year in and year out, probably the number one request we see on building needs assessments, is additional CST team members, and it, it differs from school to school depending on what allocations they have of each different employee type. But where we could, we tried to provide additional CST to our buildings if it was the right fit to remove their barriers this year. Behavior supports, so Gammon, Harry Street, Mueller, Jackson, PV, Middle, and Ortiz all received some additional behavior supports this year. Behavior, behavior teachers, or paras that, that just support the, those activities in schools. Unified pre-K, this is an exciting one. All of our pre-K classrooms in the 2526 school year and beyond are unified, and that means they're all able to accept students that have IEPs. And so all of our, our pre-K teachers have unified licenses, they have two paraeducators that are in there supporting kiddos, and so these last four schools were the remaining classrooms that we had in order to have a fully unified system. Community schools, we were able to invest in six schools, Washington, Colvin, Anderson, Adams, Dodge, and Stanley. These were all schools that indicated that they wanted an investment in family and community engagement, and were selected based on their ability to, to engage with a community school specialist to start to deploy some family engagement opportunities. And so we're starting with these six. Gotta start slow and, and slowly add in, so we're excited to see the results of this particular initiative through the year. Small group instruction paras, so there's a plethora of schools that receive some paraeducator support. And on the attendance initiative, we've now expanded everyday labs to 45 schools. That's an item you will see on tonight's consent agenda.
So Kathy, I want to hop in on a couple of things here that I think are relevant. I'm gonna tie a couple of this points back to the workshop on Friday, some things that came up. But one of the things I want to point out, this does not feel very top-down. This feels very bottom-up. This feels like we went to buildings and we listened to buildings, and they said, here's the things we need, and then we're aligning our budget with that. So, that's part of the needs assessment process. I, I would say, though, part of what lacks in the needs assessment process is maybe the swath of people that, that even know we do that, right? It's mostly the building leadership team that does that, but we took the process that was provided by KST and the legislature, and that's what we've been doing. We've, we've been workshopping, is that the right one, right? So that's something we may change in the future, because the other thing that's going on is, as Gil shared on Friday, and Latonya, that community schools are working on their own needs assessments, right? And it probably won't be very divergent from the things that they've already determined, but, but maybe we'll find some things that show up there. You will also notice that of the, of the nine squares plus the salary increase, there are no facilities issues on this, right? But we do get facilities, things that come up on the needs assessment, right? We get, if only blank worked, I could, you know, we could teach better, we could do our job better, right? So that, that is relevant to this, but a different problem that we need to solve, right? So I want to make sure, you know, one of the things that Kathy mentioned on Friday was a driveway, a secondary driveway at Black Elementary, that was on their needs assessment, right? But we don't put it as part of this process, because this is more about aligning with the academic achievement and not necessarily the facility plan. The other thing that I do want to point out that I think is critical too, that, that can be forgotten pretty quickly, a lot of this, all of this is staff, almost all of this is staff. These are people cause, right? And so what we've done, and my, now starting my third year, is really aligned people in the buildings to support kids, while we've right-sized people that aren't in buildings that support the buildings. So, 55 reductions of positions over the past two years that weren't in schools, while at the same time, and it isn't, you know, we didn't add 100 social workers or anything like that, but a few every year, especially based on need. So, sometimes people say, well, look at your staffing, you have, you increased staffing over the past few years. Well, that's true. Yeah, we have increased staffing over the past few years in the school buildings, right? That's, that's what they've told us they need. And at, at the same time, tried to right-size in the non-attendance centers, like I said, which I think can get lost in the, in the shuffle sometimes. So, the needs assessment is about buildings and supporting buildings, and we look at it as a district and the whole budget, and really try to align the whole thing with it. So, anyway, that's it. Anything you want to chime in on that one?
That was an excellent recap.
All right.
So, we've now answered two of the three required questions that we must answer for our budget process. To answer the third, I need to invite a colleague up, our Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services, Ms. Holly Ingram, to review some state assessment data with you all.
So back in May, when Addie was sharing this with you from the start, our Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Alvarez, shared some of this data, so I've just pulled a little bit of this out at a few of your requests, just to highlight again where we're at as far as state assessments. So this is from our 22, 2023 and 2024 spring state assessments for ELA. So we wanted to look at how is Wichita Public Schools performing compared to some of our peers. So the first two districts after WPS are two larger urban districts, and then the last two are large but suburban districts in, in our state, in the state of Kansas. So you can see in 2023, our Level 1, 2, 3, and 4 for ELA, and then at the bottom table, 2024 for ELA as well. So on Level 1 and Level 2, we want to see those numbers go down as we move more students into Level 3 and Level 4 as those go up. You all have seen this data, so I'm not gonna walk through the specifics, but on this next slide, that second table shows you the change in percentage. So green is where you want to see the change. So you can see for us in Wichita, other than a slight increase in Level 2, though I can argue a slight increase in 2 is actually not bad if we're moving them out of 1s, they're probably not gonna move out of 1s all the way to 3. So that's not really something we celebrate, but we know it's progress. So you can see that for us in Wichita Public Schools, we moved in the right direction in three of the four categories, and then also where those comparative districts moved as well. So this is around the state. We also wanted to look a little closer to home, so three neighboring districts as well as a private district, how we fared in comparison to those as well. So again, same numbers for us for Wichita Public Schools comparing 2023 to 2024. And then you can see those percent changes as well. So as we looked at those changes, I've highlighted who did the best out of these comparisons. So the top are the urban and suburban districts, the bottom are the neighboring and private district. So Wichita Public Schools, in what we have compared for you here, did the best in two of the categories, so the largest percentage moving students out of Level 1, and then the biggest percentage increase in Level 3. So, we often, we just throw out numbers of how many, what percentage is proficient on state assessments, but when we talk about actual percentage of students we're moving, so I'll show you here, what that actually means as far as students. So like I said, we made growth both in Level 1 and 3. Our performance is continuing to improve, also moving more students to proficiency, because we know that is what is reported publicly, it's what we get judged on, if you will, and also just the, the often thrown-out thing that private schools are doing better, so we're even showing better improvement there. So, just to put it in comparison, so a neighboring district with just shy of 8,000 students, 1.85 percentage growth is 148 students. But in Wichita Public Schools, with over 46,000 students moving just shy of 2%, that's 886 students. So, when you, when we just show percentages, sometimes we forget about how many actual kids, how many kids are studying in our teacher's classroom that is, and how many different teachers, how much staff is having an impact on that. So just wanted to highlight, often we throw out percentages, but seeing it in terms of how many kids we're talking about, I think is critical. So as we get to this third question, you had discussion back in May around how you would want to answer these. So this is just to remind you of what our answers were for 2324 on the building needs assessment going into this last year's budget planning. So you can see those at the top, and then in discussion from May, I believe it was Mr. Reeser who recommended that range. As we think about what's realistic growth to get to by 2030, is likely about a 2%, but we always should try to shoot for more, so he suggested that range of 32 to 50%. And then our goal around decreasing the number of students in that Level 1. So we're still waiting on the spring 2025 scores. Actually just looked it up, the State Board of Education will approve the cut scores next week at their August 12th meeting, and then we hope to start getting some scores across all our fingers and toes September. They've promised by October, so we can actually see where we landed on that goal. So, before we go further, any questions related to data or things like that?
Holly, can you go over briefly kind of the history of the, the changes that we've made with instruction for staffing, specifically with the investment that Wichita Public Schools has made in letters training? And go over the timeline of that, because these scores are from the 2324 school year. And so, we invested- And so we invested, and teachers started taking the letters training in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So can you kind of give a brief overview for people watching as we're talking about these scores, of what was going on prior, the investment in letters training, and kind of the schedule of that?
Yeah. So prior to ESR funds, we had been doing a very small cohort of teachers through letters training with some of our own professional development funds, but it's really hard to scale doing thirty to fifty teachers every year. Amanda Scharschel and her team, they'd been starting to work on that. So then with the infusion of ESR dollars, we were able to large-scale, we knew, as we looked at research, looked at the changes we needed to make in reading instruction, that we wanted to get all our teachers through that. So with that infusion of ESR funds, we're able to take all of our elementary teachers, we allowed them two years to do Volume One. It's a heavier lift. Dr. Hatfield and I did that learning ourselves, and it's graduate-level work. So we provided our teachers time to do that in their professional development across two years, and then last year worked through Volume Two. And so I don't know the exact percentage of where all our teachers finished up, and some are still finishing, new hires who came in and process. But really, that's not necessarily a curriculum, but it's how to teach reading, it's understanding what's happening in the brain, it's understanding how the brain learns, so that as we take the curriculum to the students, the teachers have the understanding in the right way to teach things, how to identify gaps, how to assess, so that we are providing students the most research-based approach to how we teach those foundational literacy skills. So I would say that's the biggest thing historically that's happened in that timeframe that we've done. But as we've done that systemically with our teachers, our leaders have also been learning alongside, there's letters for administrators our elementary leaders have been doing, and some of our secondary instructional coaches and leaders are doing as well. Just as we know, reading isn't just solved by third grade, we still have learners who may have gaps after that, just so we can systemically support them beyond just the third-grade goal.
So, go ahead, Kelly. I was going to point out a few things.
No, go for it.
Because the state of Kansas has adopted the seal for literacy. So can you explain kind of the timeline of that? And Wichita Public Schools is actually a leader in that, that we did not have to have the state tell us to do this, we were proactive in implementing this. And so can you please share about that?
Yeah, so starting in July of twenty-twenty-eight, all elementary educators, special ed, I don't know all the list of who has to have it, will have to have the seal of literacy on their license to be a highly qualified teacher. And one of the approved ways to get the seal of literacy on your license is through completing letters. There are other opportunities, Katie Warren referenced one, you can, there's a praxis exam you can take, there's some of our staff, the union has set up some study sessions and workshops to support staff in that, so that's another way. I think there's another similar type of graduate coursework you could take. So we heard about that change in licensure, I believe about a year and a half ago. So that also helped us try to encourage as many staff to complete letters while we had those ESR dollars in place, knowing we wouldn't have the funding flexibility to do a systemic way beyond that. And then I believe this graduating class from the universities is the last class that when they get their teacher certification licensure may not have it. So starting in twenty-twenty-six, when they take their praxis pre-service teachers coming into the field, they will have to test for it. But our existing staff, because we were ahead of the game, didn't have to go back and take other coursework, didn't have to go back and do another test, we do have some staff that maybe they didn't finish and are doing the test option, but for the majority, we've been able to provide that through learning letters.
So when we started with letters training, it was just one year prior to when these test scores, this data has been pulled. So I just want to draw attention to the fact that when we have seen information presented to the board on, like I say, our FASBRIDGE scores, we are seeing significant growth in those areas, but that is more current data, this data is old. So I want to highlight that for people that we've, the district has made some significant changes in staffing, training, and how instruction is being applied to specifically address the literacy levels in our students.
Yep. Another piece I want to highlight that Amanda Scharschel and her team have worked on, I believe we have like thirty-seven local facilitators meeting in Wichita Public Schools staff that can provide, so with letters, there's an online and reading portion you do individually, but then there are eight days of training. So we have a large number of our own staff that we also made sure that we could sustain ongoing learning as we hire new staff, just because regardless of what happens with licensure, we still wanted to be able to sustain that beyond. So I think in addition to that, trying to forecast beyond, so we're not just sitting here, there's not ESR money, how do we do this as new staff come in? Because I don't know what the state of Oklahoma is doing, I don't know what Colorado is doing, we will still probably go back to that smaller just cohort, who needs to get letters, like we were doing before we had everyone going through it.
Very good. Thank you. Kelly?
Yeah, I just, I'm glad you brought up what Katie Warren had mentioned too, because this is a big deal, right? It doesn't, oh, you have to put something on your license. To us, it sounds like not much, but this is a, this is a big deal. Could we have gotten to where we are with letters without the funding to support it?
No. The, Addie doesn't give us that much money in our professional development account.
No, no, no.
I'd like her to.
No, 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 hold on, because I'm being serious here. It isn't Addie who gives us the money, right? It's Topeka and Washington who gives us the money. So, what's that?
And locals.
And locals, right? So could we have someday somehow trained everyone in letters with the current level of funding? We could have. The increased funding that came with ESR allowed us to do it quickly, and we're seeing the fruits of it. So it's not up to us to determine that funding, it's up to other people to determine that funding. So I think it's critically important that you, as the decision-makers, understand, as we make decisions about mil rates, things like that, this directly impacts kids and learning, right? Just want to make, just want to lift that up.
Yeah, I think before we were funding about fifty to a hundred staff members, and the last number I heard Amanda Scharschel say was nineteen-hundred. So it would have taken us nineteen years with our own money.
Thank you.
On an estimate, don't like, it might be around there.
Very good. Questions? Okay. Seeing no questions?
That's my cue to proceed. Thank you Superintendent Beilefeld for having my back. Not blaming Addie for all the money problems in the district. Okay. So, you know, we spoke, we've now answered the three questions. I have to recap those at our next board meeting as we go to adopt the budget. We love repetition. And so we'll just, in the minutes of the meeting in which we adopt our budget, we'll just recap all of those decision points, and we're in, within the adoption of our budget where we expended and reallocated some resources. So you'll see it one more time, very brief, high-level overview. So let's get into the meat of tonight and the numbers and some required tasks that we have to do in publishing some notices for the public. So tonight, I have kind of a finalized version of the proposed budget that we're bringing to you. I kind of want to talk about the stages in which we kind of plan, estimate, finalize the budget, and then go to adopt the budget. Sometimes these terms and phrases get confused, and so I just want to add some clarity. I start in March going through revenue estimates with you all, so we kind of have a starting point for how much we have to cover just our fixed operating costs, so those costs like transportation and utilities that we know are going to increase every single year just to provide the same level of service, no additional services, just the same level of service. We have bills to pay, just like everyone else, and our bills are increasing every year as well. And so we have to pay for those fixed cost increases before we start to evaluate what we can invest in things like a wage package or in some of the amazing initiatives that we've chatted about this evening. And so we have to do revenue estimates. And so in March, I came to you with a proposed operating budget, sorry, for our general fund and our supplemental general fund, and we thought that was going to land around six-hundred-and-nineteen-point-five million dollars, with a general fund budget of four-hundred-and-sixty-five million, and an LOB or supplemental general fund budget of a hundred-and-fifty-four-point-three million. As we finalized enrollment estimates, property tax values, and looked at cash balances, we've got kind of the final version of what the general and supplemental general fund are going to look like. And for fiscal year twenty-six, we're proposing a general fund budget of four-hundred-and-sixty-one-point-seven million dollars, and a supplemental general fund budget of a hundred-and-fifty-two-point-nine million dollars, which is six-hundred-and-fourteen-point-six or seven million. In total, it's almost five million dollars less than the estimates that we brought to you earlier in the year. I like to talk about this because the numbers and facts changed, and so as we go from the progression of March's information to today, I just want to clarify what facts changed for us. Our budget is nearly a hundred percent a factor of enrollment. Our general fund budget is based on the number of students we have in front of us or the one-year lookback in the kids that we have. So our waitings come to us with current year, and we have a flat adjusted FTE enrollment that comes to us, and we get one year's lookback. And so as a district that's declining in enrollment, we are almost always going to use that one-year lookback in order to calculate our budget. But we are limited a hundred percent by the kids we have in our buildings. And so for us, that kind of top, that adjusted FTE budget for fiscal year twenty-six is forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-point-six students. That very first line, it decreased by one-point-one FTE. The auditors got audited, and they took one-point-one FTE from us between March and today. Our weighted FTE, which does not include special education, I separated that for tonight's presentation intentionally. So this is things like at-risk, so free lunch students, CTE contact hours, bilingual contact hours, pre-K students, they generate current year waitings, and so those are the types of students that are generating some extra funding for Wichita Public Schools. Those waitings for fiscal year twenty-six or twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-six is twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-one FTE. So we increased that from the information we brought to you in March, and that's intentional. We always want to estimate high. We want to make sure that we have enough room in our operating budget to not have to come back to request amended budgets if additional students were to report to Wichita Public Schools by count day, which is September twentieth. So we always estimate a little bit high to make sure we have wiggle room in the budget. If we go down to that third line, that's the weighted FTE for special education, this is one when we were talking about revenue estimates in March, that sped was going to be funded with some additional dollars. We were going to have some increases in our transportation, special education transportation is funded at eighty percent, and so anticipating some additional dollars for special education. So we were estimating waitings for sped over thirteen thousand. Right now, because the state legislature only put seven-point-five million dollars into special education, and as you will see on a later slide, our budget alone for special education increased nine million dollars. So the amount of money they put into sped didn't even cover the increases at just our district. So we had to drop the amount of funding that we're going to receive through special education state aid from that thirteen-point-two to eleven-point-nine, almost twelve thousand, weighted FTE for special education. So that was a big, big decrease from what we anticipated in March. Some of that comes from, we get reimbursed for different pieces of sped, I mentioned transportation is at eighty percent. We also get reimbursed for employees who support students with IEPs. That amount that we get reimbursed per employee dropped from thirty-thousand-eight-hundred dollars per FTE down to twenty-nine-thousand-six-hundred. That doesn't sound like a lot, but when you have over thirteen-hundred FTE that qualify for reimbursement, it ends up being a very material number. And so that's a large area where we saw that waiting piece decline for us this year. So ultimately, our total waitings are decreasing from our original estimates by seven-hundred-and-forty-four-point-seven-three FTE. So that's a big majority of where the change comes from and what we estimated in March versus what we're proposing to you all today. And of course, the supplemental general or LOB budget is a factor, it's a product of the general fund budget. So if the general fund budget is dropping, so is the supplemental general fund budget. It's thirty-three percent, and so they're directly proportionate to each other, and so anytime we see a decrease in general fund, we're going to see a decrease in supplemental general.
Kelly, would you like, just going through the, especially on the special ed, because I think this is important. So if the funding's the same, or I mean, seven million dollars more, then why is, why did this drop? So if the funding's the same, then why, why would it be?
Well, in March, when we came with estimates, we believed the legislature was going to fund special education. They were going to get some additional funding. We were going to get reimbursed for all of our transportation expenditures and our FTE at the same time. And so now, as legislative session has, you know, landed on that final seven-point-five-million-dollar figure, we are still going to get reimbursed for transportation, but then that money has to come from somewhere, and it's coming out of the staffing. So anytime general fund or special education is not funded, we have to use funds from general fund in order to support those initiatives. All the staff we employ are performing required services, so we have to fund them. We're just not getting reimbursement for them.
Thank you.
So now I have our total budget, which is net of transfers. This is a figure that you will see on your appendix one in your packet. It's called the Notice of Hearing, we sometimes refer to it as Code Ninety-Nine. Our total budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year is over a billion dollars. This is kind of a cool benchmark, not going to lie. The first time in my career with Wichita Public Schools that I've been able to say our budget is over a billion dollars. We've always been just slightly under a billion for the last couple of years. So our adopted budget for twenty-four, twenty-five was nine-hundred-and-seventy-point-six million dollars. We're at one billion, nine million dollars for the upcoming fiscal year. This is a difference of thirty-nine million dollars. And again, just to reiterate, the operating budget, which we already talked about, and when I talk about the operating budget, I'm talking about general fund and supplemental general fund. And so last year, our adopted budget was five-hundred-and-ninety-four-point-four million dollars, and we're proposing an operating budget of six-hundred-and-fourteen-point-seven million dollars, which is an increase of about twenty-point-two million dollars this year. And the operating budget is part of the total budget. I just break those out because the operating budget funds a lot of those weighted funds. So breaking out some specific funds, just to see some of the values that will be on the Notice of Hearing that will be published, hopefully in the paper next week. Our at-risk budget increased by nearly three million dollars, up to a hundred-and-thirty-seven-point-three. Special education, our special education budget increased nine-point-nine million dollars. And so again, when the legislature is only putting seven and a half into the pot for sped, we're going to see a decrease in the level of funding for special education. Wichita Public Schools in general, I will say, makes up about ten, ten to twelve percent of the state's budget. And so when just our budget alone is more than the amount that they're putting in, everybody across the board is going to see a decrease in the levels of funding. Capital outlay, last year's budget was a hundred-and-fifteen million, this year's is a hundred-and-twenty-nine-point-seven. That's an increase of fourteen-point-seven million dollars. If you recall, an action taken by the Financial Oversight Committee was to transfer approximately seventeen million dollars over to capital outlay, and we have budgeted those funds this year for some one-time facilities needs, and so that's where that, most of that increase is coming from. Bond and interest is just a slight change as we're getting into the last, let's see, three or four years of debt payments, so eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars in bond and interest. Federal funds, I have good news tonight, we do anticipate receiving all of our federal funds for our at-risk programs, and so those are budgeted at forty-seven million dollars, which is an increase of two-point-two. Capers is a big fund, capers is something that passes through our district, it's a big number, makes up a big proportion of our budget. We get the funds, and the same day, the state takes it back out. And that's just to fund the state's pension program for our employees. Last year, our budget was sixty-one-point-two, this year is fifty-seven. This was anticipated, as we kind of right-sized the district last year and reduced our total FTE, we anticipated capers to reduce, so it is a slight reduction of three-point-eight million dollars. Pre-K up slightly just due to salary increases, two-hundred-thousand dollars. Bilingual, this is where you see some support of the newcomer and district-wide ESOL program expansion, and so that million-dollar increase there is supporting some of those programs. And then CTE budget increased about four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars as well. Let's talk about mil rates. A mil in Wichita Public Schools generates about four million dollars, and so our mil this year is proposed, in order to support all of these pieces of the budget, our mil is proposed at a flat fifty-one-point-three-eight-seven mils. If you look at that top-line general fund, those twenty mils, that If you look at that top line, general fund, those twenty mills, that is set by statute. We cannot adjust that amount at all. We must collect twenty mills from our local property taxpayers to remit that back to the state, and they disperse it through all the districts to support different pieces of state aid. The supplemental general fund, again, this is a, a, a direct proportion of the general fund budget, and so we have to have a mill that supports that budget to backfill any state aid, right? We talked about that at the July seventh board meeting, that our state aid was, our percentage was dropping. And so we have to generate property taxes in order to backfill that revenue to support the budget that's needed to fund all the initiatives that we've gone over this evening. And so that mill is seventeen point six one eight for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. That is an increase of one point eight four two mills. You may recall, last year, we intentionally bought down that LOB mill to offer some property tax savings to constituents. Otherwise, the twenty-five mill rate would have been higher as well. Capital outlay, I will always propose eight mills when we have a deferred maintenance log as big as we do, and we're turning away facilities requests just to meet the, the nee- just the repairs and the breaks and the emergency projects, we have to levy eight mills in order to support the huge portfolio of buildings and facilities needs we have in this district. Bond and interest, you'll see a, a large reduction here. We're taking the bond and interest down from seven point five one one mills down to five point five mills. Bond and interest is something, a, a mill that the board has to establish every year in order to afford our upcoming debt payments. And that five point five mills is what we need in order to fund our debt payments. Special liability, a slight increase here to, from point one to point two six nine. So just a slight increase with the goal of keeping that mill rate flat and passing along as much in property tax savings to our constituents as possible, while still being able to afford all of the great initiatives that are going into the improvements in graduation rate, the improvements in state assessment data, the improvements that we hope to see through family and community engagement activities. We have to have a mill to support those budgets. Decreasing resources means decreased staffing, decreased people in our buildings. And, and so I'm not, I don't know how we increase scores but decrease supports. We have to have a mill rate that supports the budget. Let's talk about what this means for local property taxpayers. And again, there are multiple municipalities that levy property taxes. Wichita Public Schools is not the only one. So this is just a picture of our mill rate and what it will do to a median home price owner in, in the city of Wichita. So right now, the median home price is around two hundred thousand dollars. Last year, with last year's mill rate of fifty-one point three eight seven, which is the same as this year's, the estimated property tax would have been one thousand nine dollars and forty cents, assuming an average, and again, this does not apply to every property owner, some may see higher, some may see lower than the average of eight point seven percent increase on their appraised value. But if we apply an eight point seven percent increase to that two hundred thousand dollar home and apply our mill rate of fifty-one point three eight seven, the estimated property tax bill is going to be one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-three cents. This is eight dollars and fifty-seven cents on a monthly bill for a homeowner. So the action the board will take on the mill rate is very minimal. And again, if appraised values had not increased, neither would property taxes. I have the mill rate history for you this evening. We have fifteen full years on this chart. I think next year, we might have to start cutting some years off. I'm not sure we can fit too many more. But again, flat with last year's mill rate, this is still the lowest mill rate we have had in a fifteen-year span. So this board and previous boards have always taken a conservative approach, when possible, to pass along property tax savings to constituents, and you can see that on this mill levy history chart. At every opportunity, the board has taken action in the approval of the annual budget and the mill rate to do what we can for property tax, property taxpayers in the city of Wichita. We always prioritize student success. Superintendent Beilefeld spoke about this. We went over the top ten things that we funded with the budget this year, and you can see, it wasn't facilities, it wasn't business and operations, it wasn't general administration. It was supports and staff in schools that are being put into place to meet the needs of students and to remove barriers in our schools. And so I, I love this chart every year because this is the true commitment of everyone in this district for how we prioritize student success and outcomes. Eighty-seven point two percent of our operating budget directly supports students. So you can see that outer circle breaks out kind of all those different component units of, of our budget. So fifty-three point five percent is instruction. Those are your teachers, your parent educators, some community partners that are coming into schools to provide additional educational opportunities for students. So that's fifty-three point five percent of our budget. A lot of those mental health needs and social emotional supports live in that next red box, nurses, social workers, counselors, psychologists, speech pass. That's ten point five percent of our budget. Going down from there, the proportions get a little bit smaller. General administration for Wichita Public Schools is one point one percent of the budget. It is very small. And you can see that inner circle on this chart, the, the blue part is that eighty-seven point two percent in all the related categories that are going to directly to support students. The red piece is the very small proportion of things that may be like your facilities maintenance, your business and operations, and your general administration. We do have to have payroll, we do have to have HR, we do have to have operations. We are a large district, and we need some of those services to help provide things to schools. And so we, some things I, you know, we say don't directly impact students, but you still need them in order to have running schools. So I just think this is such a tribute to the board and the, the adoption of the budget and, and how we prioritize student success every single year by maintaining that high percentage of our operating budget directly in the classroom. I want to close us out this evening with some, kind of six overarching highlights. If you remember nothing else about the fiscal year twenty-six budget, we can remember maybe these six things. Our total budget is over a billion dollars, and our operating budget is around six hundred and fifteen million dollars. We are a huge system. We can do anything, we just can't do everything. Our fiscal year twenty-six budget is balanced. By making some hard choices and doing some prioritization this year, we no longer have an operating budget deficit. An operating budget, again, remember, is the supplemental general and general fund budgets. That doesn't mean that we have all the funding that we need in every other budget. We have capital outlay budgets, right? Where no matter what we do, we're never going to be able to afford all the needs of our facilities and our buildings. But our operating budget is healthy, and we no longer have an operating budget deficit. So that's a great highlight for fiscal year twenty-six. Base state aid per pupil is up to fifty-six fifteen, which is a four point four percent increase over the previous fiscal year. We have the lowest mill rate in fifteen years at fifty-one point three eight seven mills. Our compensation package, on average, for our benefited employees through all of our negotiating units, outpaced the three-year average CPI increase. So that compensation package this year was about five point four seven percent over that four point four that we received through base state aid. And another piece of great news, we are anticipating and are fully budgeting our federal funds for fiscal year twenty-six. So this evening, I am hoping that, we're, we're recommending to the board that you authorize the publication of the notice of hearing and the notice of exceeding the revenue-neutral tax rate for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the paper of record. And we'll establish the budget hearing and the revenue-neutral rate hearing for Monday, September eighth at six P M. at AMAC. And with that, I will pause for questions and discussion.
So I want to say one thing before we jump into questions. First off, great job. Very clear and informative. One of the ways that this, this discussion, especially, I'm thinking of essentially from, you know, January until now, like especially in the bond issue vote, is about, the, the term that's used a lot is that we're, it's, you know, these taxes, it's hurting taxpayers. Taxpayers are really hurting. So you need to lower the mill because taxpayers are getting hurt. And you hear that word a lot, hurt, right? I don't believe that most Wichitaans only solely care about the dollars that they pay in their escrow. I believe most Wichitaans care about their community and their, their fellow man and their other kids in our community. So if all you define in your life as this hurts or this doesn't hurt is your bank account, yeah, sure, okay, maybe this hurts. I don't think that that's how most people define it, though. And so keeping a mill rate that's flat, I think does, is responsive to feedback we've gotten. But we exist as an organization to teach kids to read, to help prepare them for their future, to get them future-ready, to get them jobs in our community. That's, that's what we need to do. That's what we're here for. And not one taxpayer is hurt if we do that really, really well, right? They don't get hurt by that. It actually benefits them because crime goes down in our community, our economy grows, we have more, uh, uh, lower employ- lower unemployment, more economic development, lots of intangibles that are, that are benefited. Plus, in a district where eighty percent of the kids are experiencing poverty, you know, four to eight hundred experiencing homelessness, a thousand are experiencing foster care, twenty percent aren't speaking English, those kids benefit even more if we do a really, really great job and add even more to our community. And I don't think anyone's hurt by that. I don't think, the reality is, we're not hurt when we invest in that way. Now, it's our job to be really good stewards of that money and spend it wisely and do, do good work with it and show outcomes. Letters training, I think, is a great example of when you infuse dollars into a system, we can take those dollars and we can make things happen quickly, and we turn the tra- trajectory of the district pretty quickly with that investment. And that came from Dr. Thompson and the team before me. That all predated me. But I think it's proof that investment matters, right? That it isn't hurting us to pay eight dollars, uh, uh, more unless we only define hurt by our pocketbook. And I think most Wichitaans, probably the vast majority of Wichitaans, define it in a different way, other than how it gets framed a lot of times in the newspaper, or the media, or on Facebook comments or whatever. So I think it's important that we, we continue to talk about value. You did a great job of it. But think of the, the themes tonight. Second step, we fund that out of at-risk dollars, right? That's directly impacted, the, the ability to do that is directly impacted by the funding that we get. Without the funding, the taxpayer may feel less hurt, but we aren't able to do those great things that Hannah and the team talked about tonight. And the same thing with individualized plans of study. So investment matters, and I just wanted to articulate that because I think, again, walking away, these key points, I think, are really important. But we have to define, we have to make sure that we're framing this as the value that we provide to the, to the community, that we're, we're genuinely helping kids get ready for their future. We're not a hundred percent successful, but we're, we're successful more times than not, and we're, we're increasing our outcomes and showing it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. You know, all of us sitting up here at this table are taxpayers. We pay taxes, too. And I can't get this. Okay, there we go. I think after the testimonies that we heard tonight, I think that that helps. I think it helps put what we're investing our money into, its people, its children, and it is their future. And I think that in that frame, that makes, that makes me happy because that's where I want to see my tax dollars go to right now. I don't need to talk about anything else. I just want to talk about the kids. And I wanted, the second step is great. I would love to see that. I do want to ask that the, um, the state aid per pupil's five thousand six hundred and fifteen, that's what the state gives us. What do we then add to that? What is the total aid that we give per pupil?
Uh, so I don't, so that's state aid, and that's what we get per pupil in terms of the funding the general fund budget.
But that's not all it costs for a student. Isn't there a total figure somewhere?
So like a per pupil cost?
Is it seventeen thousand? Is it eighteen thousand?
Does that make any sense? And it's, it is in the, we break it down by building in the building needs assessment, the book that you have. We list out the per pupil cost for each school.
So, so it's different?
Yeah, the average per school.
We have an average out? The average, oh, she's.
That's good a calculator.
Yes.
It's, yeah. Some of our schools are, are more efficient.
Right.
Efficient than others, but it factors in special ed and all sorts of things, so.
So budgeted funds, which is, again, not all state aid, it's got federal funds, nutrition services, special ed, were budgeted for twenty-one thousand dollars per pupil. In terms of the average amount that we spend per student, again, it depends vastly on the school, the size of the school, if it's a high school, if it's an elementary school. It can be anywhere from nine thousand dollars per student to, I would say, on average, fifteen thousand dollars if we're just talking about operating dollars. So not debt payments, not capital outlay payments, you know, for technology or one-time facilities. We also have some schools that cost us eighty to ninety thousand dollars per student because they're staffed one-to-one. So it just depend, it, it's such a wide array, depending on which school you're in, which kind of goes back to that, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. Some schools can operate with less staff more efficiently because maybe they have a bunch of veteran teachers, maybe they have really great programming. Some of our schools have a lot of high-needs kids that need ESOL supports, that have IEPs. So the amount per student, on average, it's, you know, it's, it lives somewhere for our district between thirteen and fifteen thousand dollars per school. But that is such a wide difference, depending on what type of school, what, what's the demographics at that school, what are the needs in that school.
And I think it's really important that we verbalize that at this table because what the community just now heard was, they pay twenty-one thousand dollars per student. So that's every student. And I think that if we follow that up in the framework of per building, the needs, and I think there's going to be more transparency and more understanding from the community, which might, you know, oh, okay, now I understand. There's such a lack of understanding, not necessarily communication, but understanding. They, they, these are regular people. They go to work eight to five, Monday through Friday, and they don't understand, why is it twenty-one thousand dollars per student? But it's not that for every student. So I, I wanted to just make that clear from the table here so that everybody in Wichita land could hear that.
Well, and that's the budget per student. We don't always necessarily spend all of the budget either, right? We budget for some extraordinary circumstances, too, so there's some wiggle room in the budget. And I, I have two points of clarity I'd like to take the opportunity to make there. If anyone is interested in going to find a particular building and the amount that we spend per student out of the operating budget, those links are all on our, our webpage. So on the financial services webpage, all of the building needs assessments are posted. So you can actually go and see the responses that each individual school provided for the building needs assessments, as well as the KSDE accountability report. And that has a whole slew of statistics and demographics, as well as the average amount that it costs per student to run that school. And on the backside is also all of the state assessment data broken out by different demographics as well. So it's an excellent resource for the community if they want a one-stop shop to be able to see what the building in their neighborhood wants and needs from them, and also if they're curious about the, the funding it requires to fund that particular school.
Thank you, Addie. Great presentation.
Thank you. My second, so my second point, I did want to just chat about your appendix one, which is really the purpose of tonight's budget presentation. We've got to get this code ninety-nine notice of hearing published in the paper next Wednesday, and so we'll need your approval to do that this evening. I think it, we made mention, right? And I kind of went through the mills. Maybe I can get connected again. So we went through the mill rates tonight, right? And twenty mills out of our fifty-one, we have no control of. And so if we look at what that is levying locally, that's five point seven million dollars that we have no control over. It, it has to get levied, it has to go to the state. So looking at last year's revenues, and this is on your appendix one, on your, your exceeding the revenue-neutral rate at the very bottom, it, it gives you the total taxes levied excluding the general fund. So you have last year's figure, which is around a hundred and twenty-nine point six million dollars, and this year's figure, which is a hundred and thirty-one million dollars. So we're about nine point eight in terms of total property taxes that we are levying over what we did last year. If you remember from our July meeting, we also went over the fact that state aid, the state aid rates are decreasing. That amount of revenue was eight point four million dollars. So there's only about one point five million that the district is receiving locally from those ad valorem property taxes that's over and above what we had from last fiscal year. That, that flat mill rate this year is just kind of keeping us at a, at the level to be able to afford what we had the year before. Because we found efficiencies, because we prioritize programs, we were able to fund nine of the, the ten top things. we were able to fund nine of the ten top things by finding efficiencies and places in the budget to refocus dollars on student outcomes. So I wanted to take the opportunity to clarify that point, too.
Thank you, Kathy. Julie?
I just want to piggyback on what Superintendent Bealfield said about, and about thinking most of Wichitaans are not hurt. And I would also go above and beyond that to say that I think most Wichitaans are, um, are pleased with the many results that they receive from Wichita Public Schools. The many things that we listed that, that are kind of, that are, that are very tangible. They seem like intangibles but are very positive community results from the investment that we make in public schools. And to go back to your, um, example that you've put for us relative to the median home appraisal value, you know, giving up two Starbucks coffees a month covers.
Just one now.
Just one now, okay. Giving up one Starbucks coffee a month gives me, as an individual taxpayer, that investment in our public schools and in our community and in our children, which is what we as Board of Education members care about. We care about our kids, we care about all of our kids in, in our community, and we care about improving their, their, their possibilities in life from education. So I would like to make a motion that we approve your recommendation. You'll have to put it up for me in order for me to.
It's a long one.
To repeat what it is, but I move that district, that we do those things that are on your side.
Just for the record, can you go ahead and read that for us?
Okay, I'll go ahead and read it. We, though, that, I move that the, that we authorize, that the board authorizes the publication of the Notice of Hearing and the Notice of Exceeding the Revenue Neutral Tax Rate for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year in the paper of record and establish the Budget Hearing and Revenue Neutral Rate Hearing for Monday, September eighth at six P.M. at AMAC, nine oh three South Edgemore, Wichita, Kansas, six seven two one eight.
Motion made by Julie, seconded by Stan. We still have further discussion, but we do have a motion on the table.
And before Stan goes, I want to piggyback on something, Julie, so we're piggybacking on each other now. Just to give some other perspective, so for the capital outlay, eight mills, two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, that's the house we kind of use as the example, right? That's a hundred and eighty-four dollars a year for a taxpayer. So if we wanted to replace HVAC at an elementary school, it takes sixteen thousand three hundred, two-hundred-thousand-dollar homes to do that. So that eight mills, and as you add these up, right, it seems like lots and lots of money, that eight mills for capital outlay only gets us, not only a hundred and eighty-four dollars for families, a lot of money, but when you start, a hundred and eighty-four dollars doesn't buy much when we need to fix a lot of things. So just to give perspective, you'd need twenty-one hundred other homeowners at the same cost to replace windows at one elementary school. And those aren't our big schools. So the context is important, right? We talked about big numbers, but the context is important for the individual. And some people pay more than that, some people pay less than that, but, and that's just in one year. So keep that in mind.
Thank you, Julie. Stan?
No, I was just in to make a motion.
Okay, very good. Melody?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions, and it's back on, which screen am I on? Number nineteen. So when you look at the total budget of one billion, nine hundred, one billion nine thousand, no.
One billion, nine million.
One billion, nine million. Eight hundred and fifty-four thousand. Six hundred and seventy-six dollars. And sixty, and six, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. That difference is thirty-nine million, one hundred and ninety-six, and four oh three. Then for the operating budget, we're at the six hundred and fourteen million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight, with a difference of twenty thousand, twenty million, two hundred and twelve thousand, twenty-seven. Can you, all I need to understand is, how do we make up that difference again?
So the operating budget, that second line, is part of the total budget.
Okay.
And when we talk about operating budget, that's where we get all of the state aid related to waitings. So all of the waitings for at-risk funds, special education, CTE, bilingual, they all go through general fund. And so we recognize those expenditures through that operating budget. And we just take out transfers, so that net of transfers is the important thing to remember there. So that twenty million dollars is just part of the total operating budget. The other pieces are made up of capital outlay budget increases, federal funds increases, the decrease to CAPR, so there's some ups and downs that take you from that twenty point two million dollars up to that thirty-nine point two million dollars. And so it's just slight changes in funds. Some of those were listed out on the next slide, so you can see the ups and the downs. But a lot of them are federal funding sources, so like nutrition services is mostly revenue for student meal fees. So that's not like state aid or property taxes that comes to us directly from the federal government. There's some pieces of special education that are federal funds. You've got your actual federal funds budget that saw an increase of two point two million dollars. CAPR had a decrease, so that's not a figure that's included in the operating budget.
Right. How did we make up the difference? That is, there is a difference. There's a thirty-nine million, million-dollar-plus difference, correct?
So twenty point two million dollars of that is from that base state aid increase, local property taxes.
I get that.
So the remaining is, I would, I would sum it up to federal funds.
Oh, so, okay, so if I'm looking at the budget book, where do I find?
Capital outlay. Um, so you'll see it on, we've tried to make it simple because if you're looking at the budget book, they don't make it easy. They don't give you a figure of last year's budget to this year's budget. They give you last year's actuals to this year's budget. And so the slide that's following that total budget net of transfers, where we've listed out some specific funds, that's where we tried to make it a lot more clear to where some of those big swings were coming from. Within that, right, at-risk, special education, pre-K, bilingual, CTE are all kind of part of that operating budget figure. So changes in capital outlay, bond and interest, federal funds, nutrition services are where you will find that, that other nineteen million or so in the change in the budget. But you will not find that anywhere explicitly on your Code Ninety-Nine because they do prior, they do prior-year actuals to current-year budget. So we try to just give a more clear picture of how much the budget is changing because if you look at the swings between actuals and budget, they're much larger, and so this just is, makes more sense.
Okay, so for, not only clarification, but for simplification, if, if an individual that's listening, how do they see that? How do they understand how we cured that difference? Because there's a difference in last year's budget and this year's, in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
It's an increase.
It's an increase. We're getting more funding.
We're receiving additional revenue.
That's what I needed to hear.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, that's a difference. It doesn't mean that it's a deficit. And I said cure, but that's what I needed to hear and understand was, and I think anyone else, because if you're looking and you see the difference, you're wondering, okay, so, how did, how did we make it up? Where, where did it come from? And so you're telling me where to find it. Where's, what's the majority line item? What's the majority of where we're getting these dollars from? Besides, I understand, four, four point seven percent increase in per pupil enrollment. What else?
So all of our budget, right, is funded by taxes of some sort.
Yes.
Sales tax, state income tax, federal income tax, local property taxes. We have a very small proportion that's from private donations or interest income. So when we calculate our budget, it's all as a product of enrollment. We get state aid, we levy local property taxes. State aid is a combination of property taxes, sales tax, and income taxes. And then we have all of our federal funding that comes to us, which is federal income taxes that come to us and filter down through pieces of legislation. So in some way, shape, or form, all the revenue is being generated because some sort of product of enrollment, and we're receiving funds from different sources depending on which fund it's from.
And most of that, let's see, if I'm going back to number twenty, then that's where I find the additional dollars. That's, I just.
If you go one more slide.
To twenty-one?
There you go. Does this add up to?
This is just specific funds. This is not all your funds.
Right, because I added it and it's not, yeah, it's short. Okay, so that's what I understand now. And for anyone else that might have been listening, I think it's just important for, for us to be as clear as possible and then to simplify it as much as possible because most people are not going to be able to, you know, to actually keep, to understand how we get to the bottom dollar. So the basic is, our budget increased, we received more income from these different pots, and that's how we're able to actually balance.
That's right.
Thank you.
And I am some people, because I am so grateful that Addie is here to explain this, too, because I'm one of the people that's.
And I am, too. I mean, you know, I, I'll ask a question quickly before I leave trying to figure it out and say, hmm.
I'm going to ask something that I think is in the same vein, that I'm hoping, we have like the Susan Willis telepathy here that you can pick up what I'm putting down. So if you go back one slide, the difference, the, on the operation, operating budget, the twenty million dollar increase is actually only a three point four percent increase. But we gave a staff raise that was well more than that.
That's right.
So how did we do that?
So, again, by prioritizing programs, making some very strategic choices. I think you'll recall back, I think it was my May presentation, we went over the fifty-plus Admin Center FTEs that we reduced in the budget this year that allowed us the wiggle room to both invest in some of those, the top ten initiatives as well as offer that wage package to staff. So, and again, it's three point four percent because we're always declining in enrollment. So even if the base state aid is increasing by four point four percent this year, with a one percent decline in enrollment, we're only going to see that three point four percent. And so it's, it's a strategic choices, always, every single year, doing the work to become more efficient so we can invest dollars in things that are going to impact classrooms, which is staff, it's staff salaries. Staff salaries make up seventy to seventy-five percent of our budget. So by making those choices every single year, we were, and this year specifically, we were able to outpace that percent increase on state aid by doing those things.
Thank you, yes. Great answer. And so by finding efficiencies throughout the past year, we've been able to give more of that back to all staff, not just teachers, but all, all staff that are benefited. And I think I can speak for, for the both of us and for the leadership team that this is something we'll continue to do moving forward. We'll continue to look for efficiencies. We need paychecks to get out the door, we need air conditioning to get fixed when it needs fixed. We need food for kids for breakfast and lunch, right? We need some of these things. So there's always going to be some operational costs and some operational overhead. But we have found ways we can either outsource at a cheaper rate or, or in-source, honestly. It's things that we used to outsource that we could hire somebody to do. We will continue to look for all those efficiencies. We continue to become leaner, more efficient, and therefore more impactful for kids, so.
And those are some of the complexities that we, as the largest school district in the region, come across. And then when you, when, how do we get this information out? I can remember us talking about that at one of our workshops. How do we simplify it? And I think Kathy always gets back down to brass tacks, you know, the, just the basics. How do we make this as basic and as simple as possible? Because it is a very complex institution that we have here. But by trying to simplify it, I think also helps us to be more, not only transparent, but also to build trust in this community. Because most people, once again, simply do not understand and/or make up things. You know, it's, they, it's just, it's a challenge. So, thank you.
School finance legislation was not designed to be simple, and so I am open to any recommendations on.
This was the simple version.
This is the simple, this is the simple version.
This is the simple version.
Melody, I can make this real simple. Kelly made it very simple for me when I was trying to really understand this. If you go and you buy something for a hundred dollars and you're going to pay seven point five percent in tax, it's going to be seven dollars and fifty cents. If you go buy something for two hundred dollars, your tax rate's still seven point five, but you're going to pay more because you bought more in what it cost. So that was, that simplified it for me, and I am not a math whiz like you are. And so, you know, thank you for that very elementary vision for me to be able to go ahead and grasp it and understand it. And Hazel's laughing at me.
No, and, and the question is, then, did your taxes go up?
No.
Right? Well, you paid fifteen dollars and, right, it depends on how you look at it, so, but the tax rate didn't go up. But, but for you all, what you have the ability to control, you have controlled, so the taxes didn't go up, right? You don't get to control the valuation. That's not up to you, so.
Okay. Addie, I do have a few questions for you, and these are just for clarification purposes for anybody watching or listening right now. Can you explain operating budget versus total budget?
Yep. When I speak about operating budget, those are revenues specifically related to just our general fund and supplemental general fund. So both of those are limited by a product of enrollment. And then both are supported by, well, the LOB then is supported by local property tax payments. Those two funds make up how we fund our weighted funds, so special education, at-risk, bilingual, CTE, pre-K. That's how we fund those, those things, is that operating budget. And so that figure is, when we talk about new money to invest in things like new initiatives or staff salaries through a wage package, those are the funds that we have available to, to do those things. So it's important to break those out because that makes up the operating budget, which is all the day-to-day activities that go on in our schools. The remainder, the remainder of the total budget includes things like federal funds and things like capital outlay, bond and interest, which is debt payments. And so those don't, those aren't necessarily day-to-day activities. Nutrition services and federal funds that deploy some intervention services and some extraordinary things for our students and staff are. But, yeah, it's, it's, I'm sorry, I'm losing my words here. It's, it's important to, to, to find out what the difference is. Yeah, I've lost my word, so I'm just going to pause there.
No, you're good. It's, it gets late sometimes. Do you have your Code Ninety-Nine sheet out?
I do.
Okay, excellent. I just want to go through a few line items that have seen some significant growth.
Sure.
And discuss those for a minute. So first is, I'm going to go by the code line first because I think that might be easier to find. So code line fifteen.
Okay.
And that's labeled virtual education.
That's right.
And we are seeing a few million-dollar growth in that line item. Can you explain that?
That's right. So we budget the cash in the virtual funds every single year. So that way, if the virtual programs have needs to purchase some additional technology for students, they have the budget available to do that. Also, there's a cap on enrollment, and if we are able to accept some additional students in the virtual program by bringing on new teachers, we want to make sure that we have the room in the budget to add those teacher salaries to, you know, as enrollment is panning out and families are being welcomed back to schools, we can add staff salaries if needed, if the program expands. Virtual is one that fluctuates through the course of the year. Virtual is one that fluctuates through the course of the year. And so we may get to the middle of the year and have more students being interested in transferring over to the virtual program. So we just like to budget that cash to make sure we have room to cover all of the initiatives that might come into play over the, uh, upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. The next line item is code twenty-two, and that's labeled extraordinary school program. And we're seeing a significant increase in that.
So, and again, on the code ninety-nine column, uh, the, the middle column is last year's actuals. So it's not necessarily budget to budget. And that, this is the one complaint I have about the code ninety-nine, it makes it challenging. Um, if we look at how much the extraordinary programs fund increased from last year's budget, it would not be as significant. Um, this particular fund is, uh, extraordinary school program. It's latchkey. Um, we refer to it as latchkey in Wichita Public Schools. So it's our after-school care program. Again, we wanna make sure we have wiggle room in the budget should additional programs be needed at different schools or if a particular program is, um, needs to grow. We have room in the budget to add staff to support the program. If they have some one-time needs related to new, um, toys, equipment, technology, um, field trips, et cetera, that they've got the space in the budget to do that. It's a completely parent-funded program, so we don't use any operating dollars to support that after-school care program, um, so it, it maintains itself.
Very good, thank you. Uh, the next line item is code twenty-six, labeled professional development.
Professional development, um, is something that is called out from our building needs assessment work. Uh, you saw that in terms of all the responses that principals gave. Training for teachers and paraeducators is one of the top responses that we get every single year. So when we have the opportunity to put some urine cash over into a fund, professional development is a very easy choice. It allows, um, the, our Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services to invest in some additional training initiatives, right? Um, that, that cohort of, of teachers that still need to go and get their letters, cert- certifications for their licenses, it's not free. We have to put funds somewhere in order to fund that. Um, and so cash can go into that professional development fund. Um, we wanna, again, make sure that if there is a one-time initiative, a big summer training, um, a big investment in, uh, letters is a great example. We were very fortunate to be able to use Esser funds to do that the first time around. Um, but it, as needed, if there were additional one-time training needs that were coming up in this fiscal year, we wanna make sure we have the room and the budget to fund those. Um, and so we've, we've just budgeted all the cash in that fund to ensure that we have, uh, decision-making authority to, to do those one-time things.
Okay, very good. The next item is code thirty-five, labeled gifts and grants.
Um, gifts and grants is a combination of multiple different things. So we do receive, um, some state-funded grants. So the Mental Health Intervention Team, or M-HIT, you might've heard it called, is a, um, state grant that we receive in that fund. So we get some reimbursement for mental health liaisons as well as some pass-through payments to our community mental healthcare centers. Um, so those grants come in there. Schools also receive donations. And so as schools receive donations over a thousand dollars or more, those come down and we budget them so schools can spend them in the upcoming fiscal year. So they have, um, a large cash balance of kind of prepaid donations at their discretion to spend for unrestricted purposes. Um, you may have heard, in the last year or so, we got the Wichita Public Schools Foundation up and running. And so we're very excited to have budgeted some extra dollars in this particular fund as the foundation is starting to grant some of their first awards out to our schools and our district. Um, and so we're anticipating some revenues as well from the foundation that make up part of that fifteen million dollar budget.
So this sheet shows the different funds and the codes, but it does not show the funding source. So I just wanna be clear for people watching that this, these could be federal funds, these could be local funds, these could be state funds. These are all the funds that are, are funneled in for totals.
That's right.
Okay, um, those are the questions that I have. Uh, seeing no further questions from the board, we do have a motion on the table. And so last call for any other questions. Okay, seeing none. We will go ahead and vote on the motion. Um, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, board members. Uh, Latona, next item?
Consent.
Okay, and for the public's information, the purpose of the consent agenda is to help the board handle routine matters efficiently so that the board can spend more time reviewing, monitoring, and discussing the educational issues of the Wichita Public Schools. Students' academic success is the top priority of the Board of Education. Board members review these items in detail during the Agenda Review Workshops held at ten thirty AM on the Fridays prior to each regular board meeting here at the AMAC Building. These workshops are open to the public, but no action is taken. The workshop is for discussion and questions only, and your presence is only welc- it's always welcome. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made, motion made by Stan, seconded by Julie. And before we vote, uh, I think, Noc, did you have a question or something that you wanted to say?
Yes, it concerns, uh, P twelve thirty acceptable, acceptable device and communication use by staff, students, and the district. Uh, this consent item is moving the, uh, previous personal electronic device policy, uh, to a new place. There's not gonna be any changes to the personal electronic device policy. Uh, this consent item was introduced because of, uh, changes to the student code of conduct, uh, policy. So, uh, I preface with that by saying that, uh, personally, uh, when it comes to personal electronic devices, I do support a bell-to-bell, uh, personal electronic device policy for all grade levels. Uh, if you look, um, at the youth mental health crisis, if you look at the literacy crisis, if you look at the nationwide declines in standardized test scores, even before the pandemic, much, uh, a significant portion of that is directly implicated uh, by the advent of social media, by the increasing digitalization of all aspects, all facets of, uh, life, uh, and society, and just like this commodification of attention and time by, uh, big tech. Uh, just based on the research, um, you know, the literature I've read, the experts I've talked with, my own research, I, I think I've increasingly come to the, uh, realization and conclusion that our school district does need a more comprehensive, does need a more restrictive, uh, policy when it comes to personal, uh, devices that includes, uh, storage requirements. Um, I will say though, that, uh, from a transparency perspective, from a communications perspective, from an implementation perspective, it would, it is too late, uh, to make any substantive changes to the personal electronic device policy for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, semester, specifically this upcoming, uh, semester. But, uh, long-term, I am hoping our district, uh, our Board of Education can have some meaningful dialogue and, uh, meaningful follow-up in actions in terms of how do we address, uh, you know, the role of problematic technology usage, uh, and its effects on academic outcomes, its effects on behavioral outcomes, its effects on, uh, physiological, uh, physical health outcomes.
I wanted to, um, thank you, Noc. A lot of that was shared at the workshop. Um, and just for clarity's sake, when we use the, the terminology bell-to-bell, um, the current policy is, uh, elementary and middle school essentially is bell-to-bell, even though we don't call it that, that's, that's the policy that we currently have. So really what we're talking about is high school, I think, um, just to, just to summarize a little bit. Um, and I think we're very open to, as far as staff go, whatever, whatever feedback data, uh, information we need to gather for the board to make decisions in the next few months, we're, we're happy to do that.
Okay, very good. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, um, and seeing, oh, Kathy?
I was just gonna wait. I wanna echo what Noc said. Um, I did some additional research on cell phone use, and if we wanna be in alignment with our strategic plan number three of, um, safety, there is studies that show that cell phone use for our kids during the school day, um, cause it's all day then basically, is, is harmful for them academically, intellectually. Um, and I, I, I echo Noc, again, bell-to-bell, um, just get rid of them. And the feedback we got from Dr. Hatfield said that teachers were very happy about not having a cell phone in their class. It's a distraction to the students, as we all know. It's a distraction to the teacher, we all know. And it's even a distraction to the child that's using the phone. And, um, I think that we'd see a lot of behavioral issues decrease without those cell phones. And, um, there's only nine percent in, in this one study that I found who perceived positive effects from students using cell phones in, in schools. So I just wanted to echo what Noc said, and I am in favor of, of further dialoguing this in the next several months, perhaps making a change in policy for the second semester of the school year.
And just to be clear, uh, as the superintendent said, basically elementary and middle school, we've not been using the terminology of bell-to-bell, but it is a no-cellphone policy at, at those levels. So maybe part of the discussion is we adopt that same language to clear up any kind of confusion and create some clarity around that. But we did have a pretty robust discussion at Friday's workshop regarding cell phones. And so we will continue those conversations as we move forward. So seeing no further questions from the board, we do have a motion, uh, to approve consent agenda. For all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes seven zero. Latona, next item? All right, Kelly?
Well, I have, uh, used up all my talking chips tonight, I feel like. I've, uh, I've talked a lot. I have used all my words. I just have one last thing that I didn't have a chance to say that I wanted to, well, two things, I guess. Um, an update on staffing, uh, heading into, uh, first day of school, which is next week. Uh, we currently have sixty-six vacancies. We have a couple in the pipeline, hope to get that number under sixty, uh, before we start the school year. Um, we've hired three hundred and fifty-five new teachers for this school year, which is a great number, but still have some vacancies, uh, and this time of year, we, we typically have vacancies. Um, so we, we have a lot of long-term subs that, that are in the pipeline and ready to fill those roles. But that's a question that I get asked a lot. And the other thing is, um, our second annual, uh, it's gonna be a rally at the Roundhouse this year, instead of Rally on the River, um, is Wednesday at one o'clock. Um, and if you all wanna come at twelve, twelve-thirty, um, there'll be a WPS has talent competition with some singing. Um, there'll be trivia, there'll be frivolity, dancing, all sorts of fun stuff. Um, frivolity, yes. Um, and we do have a, an exciting keynote. Uh, Dr. John Eckert is the, uh, uh, he's from Baylor University. He leads the School of Educational Leadership there. He's gonna be our keynote and talk about, um, happiness and joy and grit and optimism and how to instill that in our kids. So, uh, excited about having him on hand on Wednesday. So with that, and then, um, all teachers are back tomorrow and students are back, uh, Thursday. So we're here. It's, 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 it's time, it's time. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you, Kelly. Uh, do any board members have any new business and Board of Education reports?
Just welcome back to all teachers, students, staff, everyone. I'll be so happy to see everyone in the buildings, so happy.
Thank you, Melody. Julie?
Um, yeah, um, last month, um, I asked Superintendent Bealfield to provide all of us information on enrollments at the high schools. And in following, he, he sent that information out to all of us very promptly. And in a follow-up conversation with him, I, uh, found out that there has already been some implementation in regard to that. And then also there are some plans for the future. So I just wanted Superintendent Bealfield to share that information.
Yeah. So many things happen that I, we sometimes forget to update you all on all the things. But, um, Lauren, I'm gonna call on you. At Northeast Magnet, we added five teachers this year, is that right? So, um, one of the things we've been talking about over the past couple of years is increasing the capacity at Northeast Magnet. Um, well, not the capacity, it has capacity, increasing the enrollment. Um, so we've done that, um, in a strategic way over the past two years, adding teaching staff to that. Um, and I believe we all have a freshman class of two hundred, some.
Two twenty-five. We've added, we've accepted two hundred and twenty-five freshmen at Northeast Magnet. This will be the fourth consecutive year we've accepted two twenty-five. So with the goal, with some attrition, that we end up with Northeast Magnet being right around eight hundred kids total.
Thank you. So that is something I'm not sure you guys have been updated on. Um, the idea being, you know, our, our enrollment trend has been really, um, somewhat interesting because we have, uh, for our high school numbers, um, we have increased enrollment. Um, last year was our biggest, uh, group of high school students, um, and since two thousand. So in twenty-five years, um, we're, we're well above thirteen thousand high school students. So in order to help with some of these, uh, over-capacity issues, both at Hice and Southeast, we've done that in order to absorb some of them. Now, will that be a perfect science as far as boundary goes? Probably, probably not exactly, but it does help. Um, and then, as you know, this, this fall, we're gonna be looking at, uh, boundaries in a general sense, um, and talking about, um, how to monitor that. We'll probably wait till September twentieth to see what numbers look like, who's actually showing up to school, um, as far as enrollment goes, and then make some determinations about where to go from there. So I'm glad you brought that up, cause I'm not sure if that update was out there for everybody, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Kathy?
I just wanna say, again, Melody, you're right, welcome back to a new school year. I'm excited about this. I, I think this is gonna be a great year. I, I just feel like we're turning the corner from those C days, the COVID days. We're turning the corner with that, and, and that makes me excited. And I, it means I get to go back to school too, because I'm, I'm a teacher and I get to get into the classroom this week, and I'm excited.
Very good. Uh, seeing no other comments. Latona, next item? Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Melody. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned, thank you.